So, welcome back, folks. Thanks. We're going to call this meeting to order. It's 6:05. Sorry, we're about five minutes late, but we'll get there. This is a continuance of XL Power Pathways 1041, 2024-9235, and XL Colorado Power Pathways, S U R 2024-9236. With that being said, let's have a roll call, please.
Kevin Kirkwood.
Present.
Robert Puladek.
Here.
Van Sands.
Here.
DeeDee Shot Grace. John Gresham. John Gresham, absent. Nicole Hunt.
Here.
Kyle DiNardo.
Here.
Daniel Callen.
Here.
Diana Edstrom.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Where we left off yesterday, we had finished the applicant's rebuttal. We're now at a point where public comment is closed. The discussion is a board-only discussion at this point, and we will ask the applicant questions. We may ask staff questions. We have a number of questions that we want to go through, and then we will get to a point where we will do a roll call vote on this matter. That being said, I would like to go ahead and start us off with the questions that we may have, and I'm going to start on my right here with Van, please.
Start the other.
No, please. Van.
Please.
Okay, Robert, you're next.
All right. I was just going through the hierarchy of my questions, and I guess I'll just get started. Actually, may I have the puck? Because some of my questions surround some research I did, and I want to be able to drive to certain pages within the application. Thank you. Okay. So I have the autoplay, so do I push the button up now, or? I get the click share in the bottom right. Do I go ahead and click the button? It's turned red.
And you're showing.
Oh, good deal. All right, in no particular order, I'll be bouncing back and forth between the applicant and staff during this time. First question I have is with regards to the KOPs. There were various KOPs taken to give a view of what potentially the visual impact is to certain areas of the county. I took a look at all of them. The only one that I had any particular interest in is obviously a portion of the county that I do travel quite a bit, and this particular KOP... This particular KOP was on Highway 86. The question I have is with regards to the photographer who took these pictures. Was he a contractor for XL or an XL employee? First question.
Contractor for XL.
All right, very good. Was he given any direction as to how to take these pictures? Was there a baseline information for him to be able to create these pictures?
The contractors that take photos for the purposes of photo simulations take them to certain specifications using certain camera lenses, models, locations that are identified, and directions in which they're requested to take the photos.
Okay. So, in your mind, this is a pretty good representation of what's going on along Highway 86, then?
In terms of the route itself or a representation of the highway itself?
It's a representation of what it would look like on the highway at that particular given point on the highway. Do you think this, in your mind, is a good representation? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. I have a problem with this particular photograph, and here's the reason why. If you turn to the south 30 degrees, there's two homes right there against the highway, and it really doesn't depict the true impact, especially in the case of those two particular homeowners, landowners. And if you turn 180 degrees, there's another home right across the street from what the impact would be. So to me, this particular representation is not truly transparent to the impact, especially at that given point on Highway 86. So I find that a little disconcerting that, you know, it doesn't... To me, that makes me not trust the rest of the visual KOPs, because I have no idea... You know, I don't live in those particular areas. I have no idea if that's a real true representation, whether there's any property owners around there or residents around there. You know, to me, this was a little bit of a false presentation, just to let you know. Next thing I had for you guys was with regards to the overall scope of the project. Obviously, this is, you know, showing all five segments of the project, and one of the things I was very curious about was in the description of the project, as well as in the testimony given by one of your engineers to the Colorado PUC on March 31st, 2021, was talking about the intent of the routes and what they're built for. You guys had previously stated that these routes are being used to be able to bring power, you know, into certain substations to provide, you know, renewable resources, you know, green energy resources. And one of the things was talking about the reliability in delivering, you know, electricity, transmission power, you know, into Harvest Mile. You know, specifically Segment 5 is in support of that. I did some digging, and I was able to find a database of the current power lines. I could click on, you know, 345 KB power lines, 230, you know, kba power lines, and be able to see, you know, the overall scope of what's currently in here in the state of Colorado. The questions I'm going to have are associated with the redundancy that is stated quite often for, on the behalf of Harvest Mile and, you know, the reason for Segment 5. Right now, Harvest Mile is fed, you know, out of Pawnee with a 345 KBI. There's also the Rush Creek line that comes up through... I don't know if it's a Deer Trail substation or if that's the Missile Substation out there in eastern Colorado that also feeds into Harvest Mile. So it's, you know, being... Electricity is being brought up from the south, you know, from, you know, the Rush Creek area. Also, the Comanche Power Station, which runs up the I-25 corridor, terminates both at Rampart as well as Daniels, and Daniels feeds back into Harvest Mile with a 230 KB, you know, power line. And so, you know, Harvest Mile has, you know, quite a bit of connectivity, you know, inclusive of, you know, Rocky Mountain, the 230 line that comes down into Harvest Mile from Rocky Mountain. If the scope of the project is to be able to improve the reliability of Harvest Mile and with you shuttering Comanche Number 3, what's going to be the backfill for Comanche Number 3 on that 345 KB line?
Ask Parker Rozak, our Senior Manager of Transmission Engineering, to address a couple of those, and I can follow up as needed.
So just want to repeat the question, so...
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please approach the podium? We'd like the speakers that are not at the main table to use that.
Yep. Thank you. Test? Okay. So I just want to repeat the question, you know, just to make sure I understand. So the question was...
It's kind of two parts. You know, the presentation, part of the application, is talking about the reliability of power being delivered into Harvest Mile. And Harvest Mile is obviously an important substation when it comes to, you know, being able to supply power into that portion, you know, of the front range on the, you know, on the eastern side of Denver, Aurora, and so on. And, you know, the question I have with regards to the current connectivity in and out of Harvest Mile, both from the north, both, you know, two ways from the east, and one way from the south through the 345 that comes up from Comanche, you know, into Daniels Park, and then the 220 that ties Daniels Park to Harvest Mile, as well as the 345 that's coming in from Pawnee into Harvest Mile, and the current 220 coming down from Rocky Mountain into Harvest Mile. What is the real true need of that line? If Comanche is being shuttered, what's going to backfill Comanche on that 345?
Yeah, so there's been a number of solar projects already built, being built as Comanche has been shut down. I can't necessarily speak to any additional stuff that may be going on. I don't know for sure, but there's been the Tundra Substation installed on those 345 lines to install a large solar farm. There's Rocky Mountain Solar, which is just south of the Comanche plant that's being commissioned right now. There's two other large solar projects that have happened that tie into the Comanche Substation. So there's a number of projects there. I mean, I don't work on energy, you know, purchasing and things like that. I just transmission line engineering, but I guess I would say that the plan typically is to replace that with solar and wind generation.
So the amount of solar and wind generation is going to equate to the three plants that used to be there in Pueblo?
I would assume so.
So... So, you know, Tundra is just sitting out east of Comanche currently, and then it's basically then paralleling the existing route that comes up through Daniels Park into Harvest Mile.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak exactly to how the power flows exactly work. I think generally the power flow from Harvest Mile is south to Daniels Park through the metro. But, yeah, this does, you know, more or less parallel. That's correct, you know, between the Pueblo area and the Denver area, I'd say.
I guess I want to better understand the intent of Segment 5, because in, you know, Hari's report, he's talking about the fact that with the great amount of substitution of inverter-based high, you know, high impedance power generation, such as from inverters and so on, as compared to en masse low impedance rotary power generation, he needs to have as much of that power generation as close to the substations as possible. And, you know, my concern is that, you know, also within his report, he identifies Elbert County as a huge potential for wind and solar projects. It's titled as Zone 2 in his report to the PUC that, you know, that includes Elbert County all the way out to Burlington. And so, you know, you start to look at these segments associated with being able to have relative close, you know, short tie lines between wind and solar developers for Segment 2 out there towards Burlington, and then anything that could happen through our county would be based upon that particular transmission line, given them ease of access, low-cost access into, you know, delivering power as a power developer. And based upon the route it's taken, I can easily see where there would be classic easy locations to put in, you know, two, three, four substations in Elbert County along Segment 5. And so that's obviously my concern on the behalf of our citizens, is what is the real intent of Segment 5? If it's not to carry the load, is it only to be able to provide an on-off ramp of power generation, you know, into the grid?
So I can't really speak to Hari's testimony, but, you know, generally Segment 5 is to bring power from the southeast corner of the state towards the, you know, the front range. And it also, you know, provides redundancy. So you can imagine in the loop, you know, if there was an outage or planned outage, you know, maintenance work needed, the power could flow the other direction, basically. So, you know, I can't speak to the planning. I can't speak to Hari's testimony with the PUC, but it's... The project is to deliver, you know, load or the generation from the eastern part of the state to the front range.
And if I may, real quick, Commissioner, just add into that, the existing 345 KV that you're referencing coming out of Pawnee or out of Comanche is at existing capacity. The Comanche Plant, Unit Number 3, is not due to retire till the end of 2031. That is part of the Clean Energy Plan. Some of the resources that you referenced that were adjacent to the Colorado Pathways project were in our Clean Energy Plan, which is an electric resource plan, which is some of the development that we're doing in some of the eastern counties currently, in some of the neighboring counties like Cheyenne County and Kit Carson County and Kiowa County, some of the wind development that we're doing. We have, and I mentioned this yesterday evening, is we do have a current electric resource plan in front of the Public Utilities Commission right now, two solicit bids for replacement generation at those, at the plant in Pueblo and also in Hayden. That's why it's named the Just Transition Solicitation. It's in the Phase 1. We're looking for the portfolio to get approved by the Public Utilities Commission within the next six to eight months. Then that will go out to a request for purchase or a request for power. So we'll get bids into that solicitation and then move forward with those projects. Our anticipation, like I mentioned yesterday, is that model is going to accept a number of different options, including geothermal, wind, solar, battery storage, and nuclear. We're also contemplating adding potentially some natural gas resources as well. So to answer your question about generation, that is an evolving process as we're starting to see an unprecedented demand on the system here in Colorado. We're building the Pathways Project and a number of other transmission projects around the metro area to be able to have that redundancy, to move, you know, electrons around from a wide space, and then also bring generation on to meet that demand.
Next question is surrounding some statements made yesterday with regards to, you know, your existing transmission lines, you know, within the county. I took the time also with some of the KMZ files I was able to get online and do a quick overlay of that same document that you saw previously with, you know, with a picture of Elbert County laid over the top of it. And I was using, just so you know, my reference point is Highway 86 and Highway 70. As long as I matched those two, you know, I was able to get a perfect overlay. In your comments yesterday, I can't remember who made the comments, these particular transmission lines, I believe you represent, you know, generate about, did you say 2 million a year in tax revenue and base for us? Is that correct?
Yeah, based on 2023 numbers, it was a little over $2 million in property tax value coming to Elbert County from those assets.
You want to stick with that number?
That's the information I have, yes.
Okay, so it was real easy for me to get into our tax records here at the county, and to the general fund, that tax base was $224,000. Quite a bit of difference between 2 million and $224,000. So I don't know if you want to retract that particular statement or not, but here's the county document from the Treasurer's Office. Going on... Oh, I need my phone. Sorry. See if I can pull it up quickly. I'm sorry. I wasn't really prepared to be the first one. I was going to try to have all this lined up. Go ahead if you want to.
So, back to the tax question, what you've got, the documents you have are for 2023. Why don't you have the most current in there? Because I'm... And I'm just preface this by saying I'm finding, as I go through the documents, and I'll come back to this later, that what is presented in many, many cases by Excel are old, outdated, not current documents that are being used as references. So, again, I went on the Treasurer's site also and looked at the taxes. It's got all your records for what was paid this year, so why don't we have that instead? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To answer the question about maybe the vintage of the information, in terms of the preparation and development of the application... Oh, sure. The application materials themselves were prepared last year and submitted last year, and then the tax bills often don't come available until the beginning of the year, but certainly, as we're sitting here, we'll confirm some numbers and get current information. But the materials were prepared in advance of the submittal, and so the year may be the year prior.
Okay, so are we... Thank you. So are we saying that as we go through this packet and as planning commissioners, we're reviewing this information to see if it's accurate, if it makes sense? Are we saying that we will be finding other documents in here that are old? I mean, I found 2019 census numbers, and again, I'm going to come back and reference all of these, but do we not expect to have information that is more current than, what, 12 months or so ago?
Yeah, I think it'll depend on the information, and happy to address each of those as they come up tonight. We've been working on the project since 2020, and so if it's mapping from times when we were doing the CPCN and our initial routing efforts, it would be that, that those years, because that's the information we used to conduct the routing studies, and were shared with the public at that time.
Okay. I'll just say at this point that I find that completely unacceptable rate this minute, that the time hasn't been taken to go back and provide the county with, you know, the most current information. I don't mean yesterday, but I guess I would have assumed that somebody would be making sure that we're up to date here, but we can talk about that more. Thank you.
And just for the record, this is your statement of taxes due for the year 2024. This is going to be another two-parter or three-parter, and it's all about, you know, route selection, information that was relayed not only to the citizens of Elbert County but also in general to the public. Evidently, Channel 7 was here yesterday. I did see a camera in the back of the room, and on my news feed, this popped up, and it's a quote from an XL employee. "Colorado homes and businesses require more power, and the state's current infrastructure is not sufficient to support long-term needs and growth. Projects like the Colorado Pathway are vital to maintain the reliability of Coloradans expect from their electrical system. We have secure permits approvals in nine counties and are working on approvals in Arapahoe, El Paso, and Elbert Counties. We have collaborated with the Elbert County community for four years, addressing their questions, concerns, and acquiring rights voluntarily. We adjusted the project's location by 50 miles to accommodate the community's wishes while keeping the project costs low for our customers. We remain committed to making every effort to reach a fair and reasonable settlement. But when negotiations are unsuccessful, we have to exercise our eminent domain authority. While we do not provide electrical service to Elbert County residents, the pathway project will provide important tax revenues, benefits, the county, cities, fire, and school districts." End quote. Okay. Number one. Under what authority do you have the right to claim eminent domain? What authority is giving you that capability? As a private company?
Yeah, as our Assistant General Counsel is pulling up the information that... To give you the exact citation here.
No, what authority within Colorado? What government authority is giving you the wherewithal to be able to claim eminent domain? That's my question.
The state of Colorado.
You can do better than that.
Do you have the citation? Well, it's a CRS.
Hold on.
Yeah, Colorado.
Hold on. And while you're researching that answer, at this point, how many... How many... What's the word I'm looking for? Crap. Help me here.
How many have been mitigated?
Well, no. How many... How many court dockets have you started with landowners for immediate possession?
Of Elbert County.
Of Elbert County.
So to answer your first question, it's a Colorado state statute that authorizes the company to use eminent domain. It's Title 38, Articles 4 and 5.
Under the Colorado PUC or under the Colorado Electric Transmission Authority? You've got two authorities that claim the right of eminent domain.
No, sir.
No?
The...
Go look at the charters for both the Colorado PUC and the CETTA.
Commissioner, to answer your question, there's a Colorado state statute that gives the company the power of eminent domain.
What statute was that?
Sure. It's Title 38, Articles 4 and 5.
And it names public service of Colorado directly that has that power?
It does not name the utility specifically. It names utility companies generally.
Could you read us the statute? Do you have it?
Please.
Do you have it handy that you could read it for us?
I could try and pull it up for you.
Yeah, I know it's not easy.
And while you're pulling that up, can you answer my second question? And while you're pulling that up, can you answer my second question? How many landowners have you started the process of right to immediate possession here in the county of Elbert? Prior to your approval for this project?
Yes, as currently, we have filed on 13 landowners in Elbert County.
Interesting, okay.
While Robert's looking at that, so four, it looks like, and I'm again just looking at the index right now. So four is rights of way designated common carriers. Five is rights of way transmission companies. Are we maybe looking at Article 2, specific grants of power, or Article 3, condemnation of public lands?
No, I think Article 5 is the one that was referenced as providing the ability for transmission companies, public utility.
And mine is taking forever to download, so.
Sorry, I pulled the plug a little too soon. There we go. All right. Next question. Which kind of leads into a couple of different aspects of the overall application. The section for both the 1041 and the SCR, you know, talked about community meetings. And I believe that packet of information was built for you by your consulting firm, Tetra Tech, is that correct?
I'm sorry, which packet?
The community meetings packet, or portion of both of the applications. It looked like that was a complete package built for you by Tetra Tech, is that correct?
It is a document that Tetra Tech supported the creation of and reviewed by Excel Energy.
Okay, and you're, again, satisfied with the completeness and the overall information relayed in that packet, you know, to the planning commission for the application?
Yes.
So obviously, one of the interesting things about the community meetings was obviously, you know, some of the written responses that were included, and I lost count at, you know, basically 100% negative, you know, feedback, you know, to you. But reading through most of the comments, what I found surprising was the fact that a good portion of them weren't really against the project, were just against the route. And/or the potential routes, you know, given the timeframe at which these were, these community meetings were held. Final route wasn't necessarily selected at that time. And in fact, when I was looking at the various placards that Tetra Tech included in the document, I was a citizen, you know, also, you know, looking at your, or attending your community meetings, and there was a, there was one or two placards missing in that report. Was that accidental, done intentionally? I'm very curious about the inclusiveness of all of the placards that were on display, you know, at the various community meetings.
Are there specific ones that you want to point out that you feel are missing?
Probably the most important one. You gave citizens the opportunity to choose a route through the county, and asked them to place a pink dot on that route. There were, you know, a couple of routes on that, and people were given the opportunities to say, if we were to choose a route, which route would you choose? And that wasn't part of that particular packet, so I'm very curious, again, suspect that not all the information is being given to us based upon what you feel is appropriate for us to see.
My recollection is that there was mention that there was opportunity for the public to provide feedback on routes. That particular placard or exercise or map, however you want to reference, as you may recall if you attended multiple meetings, was the public elected to not participate in that exercise for the bulk of the meetings, and so the results weren't something that we utilized in our route selection.
Did you just say, let me make sure I heard you correctly. Did you just say that the citizens of the county did not want to participate in this exercise?
That is correct. At the initial meeting, there were a number of folks who did place dots on the maps. In subsequent meetings, we heard from members of the public that they did not prefer to participate in that exercise. There was a particular name for that exercise coined by the public, and folks indicated they would not choose to put a dot on a map.
So in other words, they didn't want to, they didn't want, based upon the limited choices, they didn't want to put a dot on their neighbor's property?
I think that's correct, yes.
But in this particular case, I hedge the bet there's 50 dots on this particular map. And, you know, a lot of the community meetings, you know, were well-attended. The one here in Kiowa, I think the one in Simla was very well-attended. And I'm sure, you know, even though, you know, they did not want to put, you know, a dot on their neighbor's property, if they were given free will to put a dot wherever on the map, instead of being told you can only select these routes, then yeah, they would probably have been more free to select a route that was probably more easterly as compared to, you know, coming up through, you know, in the middle of the county. So I just find it interesting that this particular placard was missing from our packet.
To clarify, that exercise was not conducted at the community meetings that are described. That exercise was conducted at our standard public meetings as part of our routing study.
What's the difference between the two meetings?
So there were two community meetings conducted to meet the requirements of Elbert County. Those had specific notice requirements and other things. Those are described in the document, the packet that you referenced there. The other meetings were conducted by us on behalf of the project, noticed as we would for any and all of them, as we did our routing study around the state, not only for Segment 5, but the rest of the segments. And as such, were described and are described in the routing study, but not in the community meetings.
So are you trying to diminish the importance of this exercise? I'm trying to understand why you're trying to explain the difference between the two meetings and the exercise where people were given the opportunity to select a route.
You asked a question about why it wasn't included in the community meeting summary, so I'm explaining that. Also explaining why you wouldn't find it in that packet. And then additionally, where we did receive comment that folks elected not to participate, I agree that in the initial meeting, there were a number of dots placed, and in subsequent meetings, there were very few dots, if any, placed because folks elected to not participate in the exercise. To the extent that folks wanted to provide feedback and comments on alternative routes that would not be on that particular map that you have there, we did have sheet maps and markers available that folks drew on, other sets of maps to provide information about questions, concerns. They had resources and other route alternatives that they would suggest, or modifications to lines we did have on the map.
So with regards to that, how many of those people, when given the opportunity to select a route, chose more of an easterly route? In your estimation, when they were drawing on the maps?
In terms of people drawing on the maps, selecting an easterly route, the people that lived in the east did not draw the easterly routes. People who lived to the west drew routes to the east.
Okay, fair, fair. Another comment made yesterday with regards to, you had that one slide, I couldn't find it in the packet. I don't know if that was specific to your presentation or not, about the, if you want to say, five phases of the route selection, where you had the initial route, you had suggested routes within that corridor, you expanded it to the east and west to look at, you know, alternatives, and then, you know, your final selection. You know, a number of the comments, you know, made in the packets from the community meetings was the question about using existing right-of-ways. And yesterday, a number of comments were made about the fact that existing right-of-ways were... Well, I'll let you answer. Could you re-answer that particular question about using existing right-of-ways that are existing, that are out east? If you kind of look at this map, oh, I'm sorry. You know, when it comes to, you know, some of the Rush Creek 345 KV line and so on, what is the, what was, you know, I believe you said yesterday that you can't fit through, you know, the existing wind turbine farm. I think another comment that was made yesterday was based upon existing properties and residences. There was not enough room in some of the right-of-ways. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I would just love to have you re-answer that question first.
Sure, if helpful, if you'd prefer, we can bring up that slide or the map again, but I'll go ahead and answer it, and let us know if you'd like for us to get that graphic on the screen. But I don't know if we're able to switch over, I don't know how you all have the technology. Is it living over here now? So I'll just go ahead and answer the question. And I think I made the comments, so two things there. Utilizing existing right-of-ways in terms of the space or the land right that we already have is one question that I'll address. So as you may recall from the presentation on the right-of-way for pathway, it's very similar for other existing transmission lines. The line is generally located within the center of the land right or the easement that we get, and the size or width of that easement is determined by a number of factors related to the voltage of the line, the structure configuration, and so on. When we acquire land rights typically for transmission line right-of-ways, we acquire only what we need for that particular line. That's how our regulator expects us to develop the cost of the project. We take what we need for that particular purpose. And we don't acquire, in most instances, significantly wider right-of-ways that allow for an additional one to be placed within it. So that was the first point. Second to that is, you know, so call that, you know, maybe being adjacent to as a routing alternative, so not within the same right-of-way, but being located adjacent to existing transmission lines. And so as we evaluated existing transmission lines to the east and west of where the proposed route is currently, we have to look at a number of factors. And as I mentioned last night, we have to look at routing for the entire length of the segment. And in certain instances, along that length, there are constraints built up to that existing right-of-way, whether that be homes or businesses, generation potentially, that has required setbacks, and a number of other things where we can't fit through and place an additional right-of-way. Or expand the existing right-of-way to accommodate the line.
So in the case of Segment 5 going into Harvest Mile, so right now, going into Harvest Mile, there's a single 345 coming in from Pawnee and a pair of 220s. So every time you added a transmission line coming in from the east, you would have, you had to go out and get additional right-of-way, correct?
In some instances, yes, yeah.
Okay, so it's not impossible to get additional right-of-way in an existing right-of-way, correct?
We would acquire additional right-of-way adjacent to.
Adjacent to?
Yeah.
And isn't it typically easier to get an additional adjacent right-of-way from an existing landowner that has already gone through the process with Excel?
So in some instances, and we certainly work across the state and find where we are rebuilding transmission lines that are older, and we do have to expand the right-of-way. We find great resistance to that happening. Folks are used to it the way that it is. They don't want to see the right-of-way expanded. In some cases, people are agreeable to that. And in some cases, people are agreeable to greenfield routes. We see all of it, you know, based on their personal situation and their property. The Harvest Mile substation is a good example of where we are actually resource-constrained with pathway Segment 5, in the way that we couldn't put pathway adjacent to the existing lines going east out of Harvest Mile, and we had to place it across the road. Because we did have existing encroachments on that transmission corridor, the fairgrounds, a solar project, a number of oil and gas wells, and so we were not able to place it adjacent to the existing lines and our new right-of-way across the road.
So Segment 5 is already having to make accommodations to get into Segment 5, is basically what you're saying, as compared to the existing right-of-ways that are being used? You're having to make an accommodation to get in there?
We had to acquire all new right-of-way. We couldn't place it within existing right-of-way, and nor could we place it adjacent to existing lines in there because of the constraints.
Yeah, the south side of Quincy Airport, Quincy, what's it called?
It's Quincy, yeah.
Yeah, Quincy, yeah, it's pretty chock-full. It's pretty chock-full. I drive that, you know, route quite often going through the airport. All right, so with regards to that, not sure how I'm gonna ask this next question, let me just show you something. I did another overlay. And, you know, obviously, yeah, just for, not only for you guys, but for people in the public, those yellow, not quite sure what that color is. All those yellow dots are wind turbines. This is from a mapping software that's available to the public to see the, you know, various projects, wind turbine projects, you know, across the nation. And, you know, was looking at the, if you want to say, the harvesting of wind, you know, for a renewable resource. Whether you believe in it or not, I just, you know, I think it's important for people to see the amount of, you know, we had comments last night about the red lights out on the horizon, you know, especially when you're on the top of the bluff, you know, before you drop down into the basin. Those are the red lights you see. And I was just thinking about, you know, all that land that's south of Pawnee and so on, that would be probably target rich for, you know, solar, target rich. on, that would be probably target rich for, you know, solar, target rich for additional wind, you know, as compared to, you know, in through the center of our county, and looking at what would be the potential path be, you know, be like for that segment five to come up through Lyman and button-hook around, you know, I-70 out there? Was that ever a consideration by Excel for that particular route, based upon, you know, the nice big hole around Lyman, to be able then to follow the existing Rush Creek 345 all the way in, knowing full well at some point, like you said, along Quincy, it's pretty full, you would have to hop to the other side?
So, in terms of the routes that were evaluated specifically for this project, that were described on the slide I shared yesterday, and in the routing study, we looked at options that went east to a point, and we evaluated if we could parallel the existing line up into Harvest Mile, going out to our wind farm. We weren't able in some portions of that to identify feasible alternatives to consider when we are going out and near our wind projects or others' wind projects, because not all of that wind is, not all wind in Colorado is Excel wind, we have to consider a number of things crossing the gentile lines, for example, if we are to build over a gentile line during construction, we have to potentially take that line out during construction and curtail generation that has financial impacts for all involved, we have to look at whether we can get around the substation that's in the area and do that effectively, so we did not find a feasible, from our perspective in the analysis, alternative there. In addition, I mentioned last night that there are some landowners along that particular line that elected to place conservation easements on their property after the transmission line was constructed, and so those made it impractical also to acquire additional right-of-way in those areas.
How about state lines out there? Were those investigated since this is for a state benefit?
Yeah, we do place transmission lines on state lands, in many areas, portions of pathway are on state land, segment five does cross a portion of state land as well. We have to understand or evaluate whether that state land is typically used more for open grazing land in some instances, the state land board holds property in conservation, for conservation needs, where we couldn't route through that, that is the case on some of the eastern routes that we, far eastern routes that we looked at further to the south, so we do and will and can route on state land in some instances.
On the land say, is, based upon when you said some state land is not, is it not permissible for transmission lines, or is it a case that you have to, you have to petition the state to be able to put a transmission line on it?
It depends on the particular situation, generally, routing and placing transmission on certain state lands is permissible, it is never a guarantee, if it's, for example, the state land board, who is the state agency who owns the land, there is a process that we make an application to the state land board, they evaluate the ask, and can take that to their board if necessary, and either authorize or deny that application to allow a right-of-way on state land. Other types of state land, you know, state wildlife areas and some other things, may not be allowable, we wouldn't receive permission to do it in certain instances.
Is there any of your documentation that shows those particular pieces of land that were not easily available for use for the transmission line?
I can flip through, to be double sure how we categorize it in the words, but examples of that in this area would be, for example, the Jumping Cow State Wildlife Area, we did have discussions with the state agencies about that, and there was a strong preference to not have anything located there, as an example of not allowable. As I mentioned, we have routes crossing state land in segment five, where we've made, and pathways as a whole, our segment four line crosses, I think nearly 20 miles of state land where we applied and were approved for a right-of-way.
Okay, so, all that to wrap back around to the quote that was given by an Excel employee to Channel 7, in consideration, you moved the route 50 miles, 50 miles where? Where did the 50 miles come from? What is that really truly describing, and it's based upon the community input? The community input was to take it out east, so what was someone trying to convey from Excel to Channel 7 to publish to the general public about, based upon community input, you moved it 50 miles, and ta-da?
Yeah, I think that what that quote is referencing is a 50-mile shift to the east from the original study areas that were included in the CPCN filing, and that, in fact, was based on community input, in particular, and some constraints as well, that I mentioned yesterday, and we had the map on screen that showed a number of those things like the Air Force Academy training areas, things like development that we could not fit between, and a number of other factors, so that is what that 50-mile shift is based on.
Sorry, it doesn't make sense, I mean, you would have to show me a before and after to show me that it was an actual 50-mile adjustment, I think someone was pulling that 50-mile figure, you know, out of the air, you know, just to make it sound good, my personal opinion. All right, so, another comment made was associated with route selection based upon trying to find, you know, areas of concurrent use that is similar, AKA a pipeline, AKA the Albert County Development Zone and so on. Which pipeline are you following in that route?
Um...
Hold on, I can bring it up for you, let me bring up the map that would be representative of that. Come on. I believe it's this map. That shows Vincinity map, so, proposed transmission line, no, no, it's not, I got the, I grabbed the wrong map, I'm so sorry. I wrote down page 990, am I not on page 990? Oh, there it is, the EDZ, this is the one that doesn't show the pipeline. Well, with regards to the EDZ, you know, which is obviously something that pertains to Albert County, the EDZ was developed to allow landowners the opportunity to have a streamlined permitting process to start a business, you know, within that EDZ, they don't have to go through necessarily the normal procedures to, well, I shouldn't say not normal, but a more streamlined procedure to be able to create a business for themselves based upon, you know, owning that property within the EDZ. You basically have nullified that for them, you know, where your transmission line goes through the EDZ, or follows the EDZ, now those landowners don't have that opportunity, because as far as I know, you can't do anything within that right-of-way, you've taken away a bit of their property to allow them to create, you know, create a business if they wanted to. So I just want you to understand that, you know, following the EDZ or being, you know, going through parts of the EDZ is a negative impact to those particular landowners. I still like to know the pipeline question, because, you know, I wish I wrote down correctly which map that was that shows the Vincinity Pipeline, because I swear, I took a look at it, and it's like, the transmission line is nowhere near a pipeline, so if you happen to know where it is, that would be great, but again, a statement was made about, you know, leveraging existing right-of-way type of uses, pipeline uses and so on, which, you know, I think that was a bit of a far-reaching statement.
Yeah, I'm happy to address the question on the pipeline and indicate, it seems easiest to keep your screen up, again, if you'd like for us to bring up any of our graphics, happy to do so, but on this particular map, as we move from, I guess it depends on whether we want to go south to north or north to south, we, I'll go north to south, as we follow the existing core transmission line, so entering Albert County from the Arapahoe-Albert County Line, we follow the existing core transmission line, running in that north-south direction, and then as our proposed route moves in a diagonal, and I can, I don't know if anyone has the mouse, you can actually see the pipeline route, or the pipeline on screen, I think it's an orange dashed line, it's a little hard for me to see from here, but, yeah, I think your mouse might actually be on that pipeline.
This one?
Yeah, so as you go up at diagonals across, and where our proposed transmission route, kind of diagonals, we are adjacent to that for a relatively small distance, but still adjacent.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Mention in the, mention in the application was the fact that one of the benefits of this transmission line was to be able to sell wholesale power to, God, I wrote down IREA, to Core and to Mountain View. Do you have current contracts with Core and Mountain, and selling wholesale power to them now?
We have had a transmission service wholesale arrangement with Core, yes, and then we, as an integrated grid, also support a number of utilities that interconnect at the same location, Tri-State as a GNT that serves Mountain View, for example, and others.
You know what, for now, I'm good, I need to kind of go through and clean up my notes, so if someone else wants to take over...
So, John?
Commissioner?
Before we...
Hang on, we started down on this end, if you'd like to speak and jump in, that'd be great.
I think that most questions I had were on right-of-way, and I think you've done a good job of there. I also, there was a lot of talk on fire danger yesterday, I was on the fire department in Albert County for 35 years, also an electric lineman, retired, and we never, in the 40 years that I was a lineman, or 35 years as a fireman, we never had a fire start from the transmission line. We had several start from distribution lines, overhead to underground, but we never did have a fire from the transmission line, and have several run through our district, so I just wanted to use people's minds there, and I don't have any more questions for you.
Okay, we'll come back to you if you have more. Dan, if you're ready?
I would like to continue to, I guess, question the sincerity of exploring alternate routes, because I don't think there's any question, that's one of the most sensitive and perplexing aspects of your proposal, and, you know, we can talk about the community meetings, we can talk about the alternative routes that you considered, but the bottom line, you selected two of the most highly visible and highly trafficked thoroughfares in our county, Highway 86 and the Kiowa-Bennett Road, and not only is that intrusive from the standpoint of the visual aspects, but the people who are traveling that road on a daily basis, and more importantly, the higher concentrations of population in both of those areas is very concerning, and, I mean, there's just really, I mean, how do you justify what is just so, you know, clearly obvious that you chose access that is easiest access off a highway, you know, both 86 and Kiowa-Bennett Road, you know, closer distance between two points, I mean, it really indicates that cost was a much more telling factor in your ultimate decision-making process than really the comments and the concerns of citizens, most of whom recognize the validity of a project like this, but are just dumbfounded by the proposed location.
Sure, and I just wanted to mention, if you would like for us to go back on the couple of items at any point here, we can certainly talk about the authority for eminent domain and other things, but I'll answer your questions, and if we want to circle back, let me know when it's appropriate or of interest to you. In terms of the factors considered, certainly, one of the factors is access, as you mentioned, for construction, operation and maintenance of the line, that's one of the things that we have to be able to do, we have to be able to construct the line, and then in the future, patrol and maintain it. You know, as it relates to Highway 86 specifically, certainly understand the perspective that there are folks who would prefer it not be there, I don't think we've at any point indicated that we didn't realize that these lines are high-voltage lines, they are structures over 100 feet tall, but we did hear from a number of folks that they thought being adjacent to things like highways, county roads, and existing transmission lines would reduce other types of impact, so certainly acknowledging that being next to a highway makes a line visible, but it may also reduce other impacts. For example, we did receive comments from folks that indicated they would prefer we're along Highway 86 when compared with route alternatives that we had going more through the central Biju Basin area, because there are a number of things there, wildlife, eagle nests, homes, those sorts of things, so in some cases, it's a balance, it's a, this may have a visual impact in this instance, but it reduces other types of impacts. Kiowa-Bennett Road, as you mentioned, is another, we have had that route alternative adjacent to the core transmission line in terms of putting similar facilities adjacent to one another, again, recognizing that it is visible but adjacent to, or proposed to be adjacent to, a similar use in that core transmission line. Again, also balancing the things that we need to consider, there was feedback that it was more preferable to have it adjacent... it was more preferable to have it adjacent to the core line than in other areas, again, you know, part of the Biju Basin, for example, where there aren't transmission lines.
And, and that's the answer I expected, but I still think it gets back to the obvious, you know, in terms of the impact that it's having on population, on visibility, on most frequent travel. Uh, it's just, uh, very unfortunate. Uh, you know, uh, we're all concerned about, uh, about our neighbors, I mean, uh, residents in Elbert County. And the fact that 56% of the landowners have not agreed, uh, to terms with public services is quite concerning. And the fact that, uh, many of them have had to invest, you know, with attorneys and, uh, I mean, there's, there's a fear, there's a trepidation factor, uh, to, you know, protect, uh, the, the views, the, uh, the ownership of their properties, uh, concern about the, uh, the, uh, values being negatively affected. And, you know, I, I was struck by the fact that, uh, in earlier questions, uh, you mentioned that, uh, you currently served 13 of the homeowners. Uh, is that correct?
Yes, we've, we've filed condemnation cases on 13.
Yeah, I don't profess to understand the legalities involved with eminent, no, uh, condemnation, eminent domain, but it, it seems like it's really premature to do that when you have not received approval from the county for this project.
Not sure if, if you wanted me to address the process or the timing or all of the above in, in that.
All of the above, please.
Sure, sure, okay. Um, so in terms of, um, the, the timing on the process, I'll maybe go in reverse order, I think, of, of what you described there. Um, it is pretty, I would say it's, it's typical for us to be working on permitting, um, of a variety of types, land use permitting, um, I'll call them pre-construction permits, um, literally almost it seems right up to the day that we want to start construction. It takes that long to work through the approvals and the requirements. And so our permitting processes run, um, run right up to the start of construction. With that, we have to also acquire our land rights. Um, and it is a balance of acquiring the land rights, the timing of the permits and the need to have the land, um, to have possession, um, of the right-of-way to start construction. So in the case of, um, you know, permitting for any segment, segment five, though, we have, um, permitting potentially running up to the point that we need to start construction. And so there's not a gap of six, eight, 12, 10 months, um, between there to, to permit and then get the land rights. So we do start, um, land acquisition very early, um, in the process and work at that for a number of, of, in this case, years to, um, hopefully acquire the land rights. We do sometimes hear from landowners that perhaps they want the permit to be in place before they're willing to work with us. Um, and in other cases, we have heard from landowners that, um, they have no interest in working with us at any point. And so when we, we realize we're not going to be able to get there voluntarily, um, we do send out the official notices, and so this is getting to the process a little bit. We provide as part of our process all along, um, information on the easement, the form of easement and the compensation. But as we move into eminent domain process, we send out official notices of intent, final offer letters, um, provide opportunities to respond and, and work through it at that point before we do file. Um, and then filing those, um, condemnation cases, there is a process there that takes a number of months as well. So we have to factor all of that into the timing, um, and, and hopeful approval of our permits as well as finalizing any, um, condemnation actions if, if that's what we need to do to secure the remaining land rights to get to a start of construction. They, they're definitely overlap and running in parallel and not linear where we permit and then, and then do the final land acquisition.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, then by far your highest priority is the schedule and the timing of the start of the construction project as opposed to trying to establish a balance with homeowners' rights?
I, I don't think I was saying that. Certainly, um, schedule and is, is important. We have, um, by our regulator, a requirement to hit certain milestones. Those are scheduled milestones, um, related to the inservicing of the segments. So when Pathway was originally, um, kicked off, the schedule was put in place and all of the activities were backed up to support that. Um, we don't have an option to not hit those in-service dates based on the requirements placed on us by the PUC without, um, seeing great penalties. And so we, we do have to pay attention to schedule. Schedule also equals, um, you know, dollars in certain instances. Um, but that is also why we started working with landowners on land acquisition, um, as soon as the, the proposed route was announced in late 2022 and started working with folks in 2023. So we've allowed and accounted for and tried for over two years to reach, um, voluntary agreements on the land rights and are only now, after, um, those, those years, um, proceeding with condemnation. Even though we have filed cases in those 13 instances that I mentioned, um, we can continue and do try to continue to work and negotiate with landowners to settle outside of the court process. Um, and if we're able to do that, we will.
Uh, one last question. Uh, uh, I don't know what you would describe as typical, but is it, uh, is it somewhat typical that when you're going through the process and the timing that we are as we are here tonight, uh, that the majority of the landowners have not signed on to what, uh, you have proposed? Is that the exception to the rule?
Um, a, a little bit of both. I would certainly say we see some projects where, um, that, that is the case and we see some where it's not the case. Um, you know, I think that it's, it's always tough to predict, um, where we'll be, and in this case, that is where, where we are. Um, but, you know, also not, um, you know, what, different than I've seen on some other projects, rebuilds that I've mentioned or some other things.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Diana Edstrom. I'm going to start with an easy one, water. Um, I saw in multiple places in the documents that water would be brought in for the construction process. Where is that water coming from?
Um, the, the project is contracted with the town of Simla for water, the water source for construction.
Okay.
And we provided that information in our application as proof of, of that contract.
Okay, I missed it in the thousands.
Of the few pages.
Yeah, I know. Um, let me, before I start to talk about eminent domain, um, the staff report that we have, and this one specifically for the 1041, um, it, one of the things that it says on here for the request project summary, um, it says, while the CPUC determines a public need for the project, it does not approve the specific location of the specific project facilities. The project-specific location and land use approval is determined by Elbert County and through easement negotiations with landowners. Can you explain to me what that means? Because it, it sounds like I could say to you as planning commissioner, I want you to move that route. I don't agree with it being where you are proposing it.
Yeah, so a couple of things related to that, um, in the statement and what is submitted in the CPCN filing with the PUC, um, that information that is in that filing, um, doesn't include the final or proposed route. The PUC doesn't approve or deny a route. So in that application, they're approving what you just described. Um, and so it is in the state of Colorado, a power, um, you know, provided to the local jurisdictions to review the route in the form of our land use permit applications and make a determination as to whether that application meets the requirements of the code and, and the approval criteria. Um, certainly, you know, I think the jurisdiction can choose, um, Elbert County can choose to approve or deny our permit application for the route as, as it, you know, does or doesn't meet code based on the review.
So, um, so it's, if I understand what you're saying, in order to, basically by turning down the application, we're turning down the route. It wouldn't be just a matter of saying, you know, we don't like this route, can we change this route, can we move it and move forward with the application at that point? And, and I, I guess where I'm going with this also is some of the comments that are in the packet and that, that we've talked about in this hearing is that you move the route or you change the route based on public input. I found absolutely no public input documenting that people wanted this running where it's running. And I, I'd love to see facts showing that that is what the community told you they wanted to do because, no offense, but right now, it's just your word.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because as, as I think Robert had said or one of the other gentlemen, all of the, um, written comments that were given to Excel that were in the packet from 2023, um, all said, all said as far as moving it, not a single one said, oh, I'd like you to run this next to the core line or I'd like you to run this down 86 or up Kiowa Bennett. So do you have documentation to back up your assertion that this was done based on community input?
So I think the, the pieces that I would reference in that particular instance would be, um, in the, the information in the routing study related to, um, the public meetings. And there is a, a lengthy table, um, in the attachment and an attachment to that routing study that documents what routes were eliminated, added or modified and for what reason. And you'll see in those instances, um, things like, um, it was, it was modified based on public comment to do this or do that or avoid that. Um, and so it's documented in that way. Um, the particular route that we're talking about in terms of being adjacent to Highway 86 and the core line was direct feedback and it was drawn on one of those large-scale maps that I referenced earlier, um, by a member of the public, um, and was also, um, supported in conversations with state agencies. So for example, um, CPW indicated that they felt it should be placed adjacent to existing linear infrastructure as opposed to being in places where that doesn't exist.
I, I would just have to say that it, it sounds like from the comments on the meetings, and I did go to one of them, and the, what you had said about people not wanting to participate. And it does not sound to me like that. I understand you have to try and get this information somehow, but it's kind of like the rat in the maze and the cheese. They're going to go to the cheese and you've got people that look at this and go, oh gosh, this route's going to go by my house. I don't want it here, I want it here. And that's not a scientific way or a good way to make a decision that is going to impact this county forever. Um, so let's, um, thank you for the answer on the, the route. Um, let's go to eminent domain. So, um, we had 21 of 47 landowners that did not agree to negotiate, um, a right-of-way with you all, and you've got, how many did we say are in the court right now?
Uh, 13.
Okay. And you probably can't answer this question, but I'd really like to know how much money these landowners are going to have to pay to try and fight you off. Between court costs, lawyers, um, I mean, this, this county is rural. You know, we heard, we heard in the public comments from a lot of ranchers whose families have been here for generations. And to say that they are going to have to give up part of their land, even if somebody thinks it's not a lot of land, it's their land. And to service people in the front range is an abomination. But it's, I just had to put that out there. How do we get the specifics on, um, maybe not necessarily who those landowners are, but I would like to know, have they all been given the, um, the thing that tells them how much money they would be paid for this? What's, um, we had a gentleman up here making public comments yesterday that said he'd been notified, uh, I believe it was with the text, that he was going to be taken to court. And he said he had not been communicated with, he had not received anything. And I think as a county, it is important to support our citizens and make sure that they are in fact, um, being dealt with fairly. And I'm, I'm just hearing things that don't make me feel that that's happening. So how do we get specifics on all of these different cases to make sure that these folks that are being dragged into court because they don't want to give up their land? I understand you've got eminent domain, but that doesn't mean it's okay.
Um, I think you asked a couple of questions, so, um, I certainly cannot speak to or disclose any of our negotiations. If the landowners themselves elect to communicate that information with you all, then, um, that would be their choice to do so. Um, there is a process that, uh, we must go through before we file condemnation cases that includes sending notice of intent and final offer letters. Um, those letters communicate to the landowner, um, under, you know, what authority we have to, um, acquire the land. The process, their rights as a landowner, it includes an offer for, in terms of compensation. Um, it provides them the opportunity to, um, get an appraisal, um, through an appraiser of their choice, and that is at our cost, um, reasonable cost, and so we pay for those before we would ever file a case. So we can't file a case without having communicated with the landowner and providing that information. So, um, I, I don't think the, um, individual that spoke last night was indicating they were communicated with, um, about that filing by, um, text. I believe it was an email and communication, um, in an ongoing communication string, um, about that process that I was just describing.
Okay, and I, I think he, thank you. I, I think he had an entirely different, um, view of how that had, had all taken place.
And do, do you want us to address the condemnation authority? I know we've been kind of offering to share that information with you all.
Sure, yeah. Yep. Bless.
So Commissioner, you had asked specifically for the statutory citation. Um, two citations, specifically CRS 38 dash four dash 103?
38 dash four, dash 103?
That's correct.
Okay.
And CRS 38 dash five dash 104?
And?
And, sorry, and also 38 dash five dash 105.
Can you give me a brief summary?
Can you, yeah, can you read the, uh, one that provides you with the, uh, power of eminent domain? The summary- The summarization is fine.
Sure. High level, Piesco is an electric power company within the meaning of CRS 38-4-103, and an electric light power company within the meaning of CRS 38-5-104. It's vest, Piesco's vested with the power of eminent domain pursuant to 38-4-103. And it's a short statute. If you want me to hit some of the highlights in it, I'm happy to do that, or?
Definition's number one, and then yes, please do.
And, and did you just say that Piesco was called out in that statute?
No, no, I'm saying they fall within the definition of an electric power company within the statute.
Okay.
So for section 38-4-103, let's see, um, subsection one, any foreign or domestic corporation organized or chartered for the purpose, among other things, of conducting and maintaining electric power lines for providing power or light by means of electricity for hire, has a right of way for the construction, operation, and maintenance of electric power lines through any patented or unpatented mine or mining claim or other land without the consent of the owner of the patented or unpatented, patented mine or mining claim or other land if the right of way is necessary for the purposes proposed. Subsection two defines an electric utility as defined in section 40-15-601. Subsection six, exercising its rights under subsection one of this, of this section may, and then it goes on to talk about the, the installation.
Is there anything in there describing the process that must be upheld by the utility that is filing for, uh, uh, right of possession?
You're talking about the, the process that Jen was just describing?
Yeah. Is that, is that defined?
It is, and let me see. The actual, those steps, and I don't have that pulled up in front of me, is 38-1-101. That talks about that process and the steps.
Thank, I'm not going to ask you to read that or summarize that. That's something I can do on my own.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Diane, do you want to continue?
Um, please. Um, lights, are there going to be lights on top of these towers since we've been talking about the red flashing lights, which I can see from my backyard also?
No, they're, the, the transmission towers will not have lights on them.
Okay.
They're not required to based on FAA. So it's the FAA requirements that, that set the standard for those to exist on wind turbines. We do not have to light these.
Okay. And, um, one of the things we talked about earlier was, um, putting the Excel path next to the core path and some thoughts that maybe that wouldn't look so bad, or it would be more compatible to have it running next to another transmission line. So how tall are those power poles for core, for example?
Parker, I'm seeing Parker knows. Run to the podium, Parker.
Um, I'm not exactly sure how tall they all are, but generally, um, they're double circuit 115 KV towers, uh, 115 KV versus R345. And they're probably in the 80 to 100 foot range, I would say for the most part, based on my experience of designing plenty of those structures myself. Something like that.
Um, when I drive up Kiowa Bennett Road, those phone poles or, excuse me, the power poles do not look like they're 80 to 100 feet tall. Are you sure?
Like I said, I didn't, we didn't design it, we don't own it, but in my experience, double circuit 115 KV to maintain ground clearance and face-to-face spacing, generally the structures, you know, depends on your span lengths, there, there's a lot of engineering that goes into it. Um, they're not our towers. I'm sure that when they filed their application, they probably put that in there, um, to reference when they built the line.
Okay. And the diameter, I think, on the towers was six to nine feet, I think?
That's, that's correct.
Um, so I'm going to assume based on height, the diameter would probably be similar for those power poles that these will be running next to. And they're, they're not. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're, that we've got apples and oranges here and that Excel is coming back with, um, saying that this is, is compatible, it fits in, it, it won't look that different when I think we are looking at apples and oranges. And I'd really like to know, um, what the difference in height is between what will be going in and what's already there so that that can be addressed as well.
Are you able to pull anything or no? Yeah, if, if we have enough service for Parker to check some vials, we can, we can work that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm going to go back to eminent domain again. So in the other counties that have segments, um, do you happen to know approximately how many permits you needed in total? How many you received? How many were eminent domain? And are there any outstanding at this point?
Um, I'll address, I think, the permitting question first.
Okay.
Um, and assuming you, you meant permits and not land rights. Is that right or no?
I'm, I'm sorry, repeat that?
When you mentioned permits, were you asking about like our land use permit, the equivalent of what we're here for?
The right of way, yes.
So in terms of land use permits, um, we, uh, for segments two and three, those are constructed, all of the permitting is complete there, all of the land, um, has been acquired for segments two and three. Segment one is under construction as well. Um, we have our land use permits there. Um, that's Morgan and Weld Counties in that instance. Um, and we have, um, our land rights there to conduct that construction. Segment four, um, is a number of counties, uh, Kiowa, Crowley, and Pueblo. We have all of the land use permits for that segment that's under construction, um, and we have the land rights there also.
Um, do you know of all of those, how many you actually had to go through eminent domain to get those permits?
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, I know it's a.
Well, sorry, I was, I was giving you maybe, um, different information than you were looking for.
That's okay.
I was talking about land use permits. I think you're asking about the land rights.
I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry. Sorry, I was confused there. So in terms of, um, um, segments two and three, I don't have exact numbers partially because I didn't oversee land at that time, um, but it's my understanding and maybe folks who might know can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I don't believe that we, we did not, um, go through condemnation, um, completely on any landowners in segments two and three. We, we filed but, um, settled, um, so we did not go through any on segments two and three. Segment one, um, we have, um, several in process but, um, have agreed to immediate possession and are working through that. So we, we expect those to hopefully close out. Segment four, um, we had one, um, landowner that we, um, did go to court for immediate possession on, um, and then, um, settled outside of that.
I find it interesting that it sounds like Elbert County has the highest number of people that are fighting this. I mean, we have over 50% of the needed permits are having to go through at this point probably eminent domain.
Oh, yeah. So, um, the numbers I was giving you was going through the complete process. As I mentioned earlier, um, there are points along the way certainly that, um, if we send a notice of intent or a final offer letter, um, that landowners could, could choose to accept that, um, and then we wouldn't file. Even once we have filed and we're working, um, to set immediate possession hearings, we can reach agreements with landowners and not then need to do immediate possession. In terms of the, the numbers that we initiated the process on, um, in those other segments, um, it was more than just what I was just indicating to you. I was giving you the numbers that went through the full process. So we filed, I think, um, on something in the twenties, maybe, um, out east, something in the twenties, um, on segment one.
Is that a percentage or a number?
That's a, that's a number, a total number.
What percentage, I think is the question.
Um, I don't know if Matt can maybe try and pull some percentages, but, um, I don't have those at hand. If I did some quick math, um, miles wise, uh, certainly I would say here in Elbert County, um, the percent is, is maybe higher than some others, if, if that's the, the gist of what you're looking for. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've got, I've got, actually I have a lot more things, but I'm only going to go to one more thing at this point and pass it on. Um, and this, you know, comes up in the S U R. The, um, comments, um, Jen, that you made at the, when you were responding yesterday to the public comment, um, you brought up impact fees, um, when you were talking about the local benefit. And when I look at this, at number one, why do you think that you'll be paying impact fees? Have you, have you worked with the county on that? Have you discussed it with anybody? Cause you threw that out and then a number, um, which I think was like two and a half million or something. And I'm not seeing anything in our, our zoning or regulations to support impact fees on this.
I don't know if county staff would prefer to answer that. I don't want to speak to your, to your code.
I'm making a few assumptions here so anyone can jump in and clarify. I'm assuming the impact fee that was addressed yesterday is actually a fee related to the S U R process. It's in our adopted fee schedule and it equals 2% of construction cost. Um, it's not technically an impact fee per our regulations.
And, and I did, I did a transcript, so you'll bear with me as I read this because it, there was nothing that I could find in the packet, um, that Excel was going to be paying any fees. And it was, it came back to the whole discussion of what benefit does Elbert County get from having this line go smack dab through the middle of our beautiful county? Um, so there was nothing in there to substantiate this, and you had said, um, oh, let's see. Um, okay. Uh, certainly Andrew mentioned, and I would like to reiterate again, Elbert County has in the code of requirement for an impact fee. We estimated that impact fee based on the cost of the project in Elbert County to be around two and a half million dollars. That would be due to Elbert County understanding and hearing that there are concerns about needs in the county and maybe resources that the county could benefit from. I would imagine that receipt of that impact fee could help address some of these resources needed. Uh, where I'm going with this is where did that come from? There's, where, why did that suddenly come up? Um, impact fees are entirely different. There is a construction fee that you will be required to pay. Are you even aware of that?
I, I believe that was what was just mentioned. If, um, it was incorrectly called an impact fee, we can change the, the term and call it a construction fee or whatever, you know, is referenced in the code. Um, the, the indication that we would pay that is if the code requires it, we would pay the fee. That is common for us across a number of jurisdictions for a pathway that we pay those fees called impact fees or, um, other names to, to those percentages.
But you should know, but you should know that, and that in, should have been in the packet, financials, so that the county understands and we understand, do you know what you're paying? Because the, um, the special use by review fee schedule, um, says for, um, wind farms, solar farms, power, transmission lines, that fee is $20,000 plus 2% of total cost of construction. And the cost of construction fees shall be paid following the board approval. Fees will be due and payable prior to any work taking place on the approved site or within six months of board approval, whichever comes first. A cost of construction statement shall be provided by the applicant to CDS within 45 days of board approval or before work begins, whichever comes first. Elbert County will review the statement and may seek third party input, blah, blah, blah. So legally, did you guys even know you were responsible for this? And how do you know what the cost of construction is so you can make the commitment to Elbert County? How much money we will be receiving, assuming this is approved?
Yes, we knew it was required. Um, it also, we knew it was required from a number of things, our review of the code, um, but it was also provided by the county in the initial statement of amounts due or invoice, um, that we received, and I think it was November of last year.
Do we have that, staff?
Do we have the invoice?
Do you have the document that she's talking about? And how much do they, are they going to owe Elbert County?
The, the invoice didn't specify an amount. It, it specified the percent that you just read off.
Okay, how much are the construction costs so we can determine that amount? Uh, cause we just did another similar project and that company told us exactly how much money that was going to be. And that was part of the decision-making process.
Sure. So we have, um, is that chart and is that the right number? So the, the Elbert County, um, construction costs are estimated to be 127 million, 488,000, 931 dollars, uh, if we're getting specific. And those estimates are, um, created to support, um, not only our, um, PUC, we had to provide estimates to the PUC on the cost of the project, um, and those are confirmed as we move along and order materials and have, um, exact pricing and include our construction contracts as well.
You won't be able to move forward with any of that if you don't come to this agreement with the county is what I'm reading here. Again, it says, um, the cost of construction fees shall be paid following the board approval. So how much is that fee going to be for Elbert County? Cause I think you did say another county, or did you say Elbert and I just?
So, so what we, um, indicated yesterday is that we estimate that fee would be the 2.5 million dollars based on a 2% calculation of 127 million, construction cost in Elbert County.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what was the, what was the number you're estimating again?
127 million, 488,000, 931 dollars.
And how many cents?
50.
Um, thank you. Um, so Jen, how do we get that in writing so that we know exactly what is going to be approved here? It, the estimate at least, we need something signed that they're committing to.
So there's a process outlined. It's been, the applicants have been notified of the fee that's due, and there is a process outlined. It's not due unless the project is approved at the board, and then they have a certain amount of time to provide that fee.
I understand, is it, but is it documented from them that this is what they will be paying? Do we have a?
The exact dollar amount is not yet determined. And from the section that you read, right, there's an opportunity for the county to review that amount and confirm that that's an accurate amount.
But they need something in writing to review, not a verbal. Do you, do you see where I'm going with this? Cause this could all change. Because this could all change at the next meeting.
And in writing, that would happen, but it doesn't happen until after an approval is granted and then the fee becomes due.
Then let's take that offline, because that's.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
Do we have a copy of the build plan that you have that outlines the 127 and some change million? Is that part of the packet or is that something you've shared with county already?
The number, the construction cost number, I don't believe, has been shared with the county.
Is the number fluid at this point?
Looking to our P M, fairly solid. Pardon me, chairman? Yeah. Yeah, so at this point, based on where we are in material procurement and such, we expect that number to be in that range, slight fluctuations, but that would be the number. So, if what you all are asking for is an estimated construction cost in Elbert County, we would be happy to provide that to you.
Please, and make that available for the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'll just pass the buck over to Nicole. Thank you.
Hey there, thank you. You know, I'd like to just go ahead and start with a really basic question to get a feel for why we're here. Why did you submit an unfinished application?
So, let me know if you can hear me. I'm instead of holding this up, if I need to adjust. It worked last night, but I don't know if I'm being quieter this evening or something. So, I feel like you're not going to be able to hear me. In terms of the completeness of the application, we feel that our applications are complete based on the requirements outlined in code. The code allows for the applicant to request the applications be moved forward to hearing, and we elected to do that, given that there was not agreement on whether the applications were complete or not. In addition, we wanted to make sure that the process, the permitting process, moved forward in accordance with Colorado's statutory timelines as well. In the event that those statutory timelines are not met, it can actually result in our applications being deemed approved without even going to hearing. We elected to move things forward to bring it to hearing and have them heard by the jurisdiction as opposed to potentially having them deemed approved by not meeting those statutory timelines.
Have you ever worked with a county that had a provision that our county has, which is that you can go ahead and move forward even without an unfinished application or a finished application?
I have, I have not, I don't think.
I would assume that Excel knows that by moving forward with our county recommending no, because according to their interpretation, it's not complete, that you've created an adversarial type of relationship between what our county thinks is right, or our county staff thinks is the right path forward, following our county regulations, and then what the company wants. Why would you choose an adversarial path when you've got such a major project on your hands that you'd like to see come to fruition?
I think for a couple of reasons. The intent certainly is not to be adversarial. We felt that it would create an even potentially more adversarial relationship to move forward under statutory timelines and have the applications deemed approved without bringing them to hearing.
In the presentation and throughout the application, you've talked about this as the preferred route. Is it possible that we could be talking with you a year from now and your preferred route has changed based on circumstances that you did not foresee at this moment in time?
Not that I can think of. The route that we have noted as preferred, is our proposed route, we have completed engineering and design on that route. We have procured materials based on that design. Our poles, for example, are designed and created for the location in which they'll be placed. So, we have progressed based on, you know, the belief that this is the route that we would move forward with. I don't anticipate us changing that.
In any of your other projects in other counties, have you ever changed your, the route in the middle of the process?
In the middle of the permit process?
Or even throughout? Something happens, something comes up, you have to amend it in some way that was unforeseeable. Have you had that type of experience in any of your projects before?
I won't say never. Let me think about that. I would say certainly very rare to amend or change in the middle of the process.
Are there, and we've touched on this, but just for clarity's sake, are there any other feasible alternatives to the proposed route?
I think in terms of technically feasible, there are often a number of them when you look at it from just that singular perspective. Is something feasible? Can we do a number of things with unlimited time and money, for example? Or can we do unlimited things with, you know, other, not considering other factors? Sure. I don't think our routing study indicates this is the only feasible route. It is the route that was selected based on a balancing of factors that we need to consider in selecting the route.
About how many other feasible routes would you say there are, if this wasn't the only one?
We evaluated, and I can pull the numbers, you know, a lot of line miles, as I indicated in my presentation yesterday, and didn't select those. So, I can grab the number that I wrote down here in my notes. So, you know, I think in terms of the evaluation for segment five as a whole at Elbert County, we evaluated 500 miles of routes in Elbert County.
But I'm sure you wouldn't say that all 500 were feasible, right?
Technically feasible, in that could we design the route and build it? I think that I would say yes, those are technically feasible route options. They have a number of factors or a level of impact associated with each of those alternatives or different combinations of those alternatives that make them less preferable, based on what we had to balance. So, technical feasibility, balancing with impacts and other things that we have to consider.
Okay, so more likely to be a possibility feasible? How many of those would you say that there are?
I think trying to define feasibility is, I guess, what I'm thinking about now in terms of my answer. So, could a different route be brought forward in any scenario where we put it in an application and I think it would be permitted? Or I think that a jurisdiction that has oversight would allow the impacts to wetlands or species? I don't think I have that information from me to say how many or how many miles or what number of those. Again, I think the intent of the routing study was to communicate what we looked at, the factors that we considered that led to the selection of the one that we have proposed in our application.
Okay. Yesterday, we talked about the possibility of burying a line and that it was more expensive. Have you considered perhaps maybe not burying the entire line, but burying parts of the line in Elbert County?
Sure. I know Parker's trying to pull some of the other information. I think in terms of the, again, going back to some of the testimony yesterday, did we look at that? So, it was originally contemplated in our C P C N filing and the P U C's written decision that undergrounding the route was not, was not, you know, in the best interest of the ratepayers. And so, no, from that point forward, did we consider underground route options? The routing study was, the purpose for that routing study was to consider an overhead transmission line. In the event that a party, a jurisdiction, a landowner, were interested in covering the cost differential to place something underground, we would evaluate the feasibility at that point in time.
Right. I do remember you mentioning that if the county wanted to do it, the county could pay for it. Or if a developer wanted to do it, the developer could do it. Have you ever had an instance in which a county agreed to bury the line to pay the extra cost for that?
Julie, I don't know if you're nodding in response to that question. We have had, in terms of a willingness to pay for burying a line.
Was that in Colorado?
Yeah. Yes, we have. Parker?
There's been a few instances where either the jurisdiction has had like a millage put in place or something like that to pay for undergrounding the line, or we've had an instance where a number of golf courses, if you're familiar with Bear Creek, they paid to underground the line through the golf courses. So, things like that.
Real quick, before you leave, technically, what is the maximum voltage? Technically, what is the maximum voltage that is feasible to bury and maintain the dielectric distance necessary between the hotlines?
Yes, in the United States, the highest AC voltage that's underground is 500 K V. It's Southern California Edison.
Okay.
And it's approximately a, I want to say it's like a four-mile section, but for 345 K V, the technical limitations are generally about 20 miles. After that point, the capacitance gets too much and you literally can't push power. So, the power just does not flow. So, depending on the electrical requirements of the line, that distance could be much shorter, depending on how much power actually needs to flow. As the capacitance builds, less power flows. So, you'd have to look at that and model comparing how much electricity needs to flow versus the distance between stations and then what other compensation devices may be needed to allow it to flow, so.
Right, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Has Excel ever paid to bury a line in Colorado?
And just want to understand the question. If the question is, do we have underground lines in Colorado? The answer is yes. In instances where we cannot acquire right-of-way for an overhead line, in terms of there not being space, for example, lines are placed underground. Downtown Denver is an example.
So, in the city, they get their transmission lines put underground, but in the rural community, we have to have ours seen above ground and breaking up our scenic landscape.
So, the P U C makes that decision. We have to file with the P U C and explain the project, the cost, and the schedule. The starting point for projects is always overhead. That is easiest, fastest, usually the least expensive to construct, to patrol for maintenance and to repair. So, that is the starting point, and we would have to make a case to the P U C to place it underground, and they would have to approve the cost for that to happen. Generally, that approval has only come in instances where there is not available overhead right-of-way. And that does happen to be in the cities, I think generally, yes.
Well, I'm sure you could see the irony of a place like Elbert County, where people move for the scenic vistas, the beautiful views, to get away from the city, just to have these overhead transmission lines completely ruin the rural character and nature of what makes this county different than Denver or any other high-dun city city. And I'm wondering, are these considerations that the P U C evaluates as they're making these kind of determinations, or is it strictly based on the case that you make to the P U C?
I guess I can't speak on behalf of the P U C and their deliberations there.
In your experience, are you, are you the one advocating for the companies? The company the one advocating for the overhead lines versus the underground lines?
I just want to add one thing. As we go through these cases, these are publicly available cases where we generally have a number of intervening parties that advocate on behalf of a number of different things. Obviously, the company brings forward with different C P C Ns to advocate, to Jen's point, the project profile that we put together, cost estimates, technical feasibility of those things. We also have intervenors like the Utility Advocates Association, which are trying to ensure that rates stay at an affordable price here in the state of Colorado. And so, one of the considerations that the Public Utilities Commission and the way that that forum is set up to ensure that there is multiple points of view, so that the commissioners can make a decision for that's best for the state of Colorado, not only for our rural communities, but also for our ratepayers across the state.
So, it sounds like you make a case to the P U C that's in the company's best financial interest, and then the P U C will decide whether or not your application is approved. If you prefer the overground in Denver, then that would be denied. But if you preferred the overground in a more rural area, it's less likely it would be denied, generally speaking?
I'm trying to track what you stated there. Obviously, we put a number of different portfolios in front of the commission. We don't generally, I mean, I'll think about the next month of different cases that we have in front of the commission that are not all just infrastructure cases. So, the commission is balancing a number of different things that we bring forward. It is not always the company's best interest to bring the most financially favorable project forward, where, you know, there's a number of different things that we bring forward to the commission, whether it's rebates for our customers, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's generation and things of that nature. There's a plethora of things that we bring forward, and they're not always in a financial best interest. So, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question in a generalization of the commission will not approve an overhead line in Denver. Right now, we're actually building three generation, or transmission lines in Denver. We have close to, I think, 60 miles worth of rebuilds in the Denver metro area that are all overhead, and that was approved under the Clean Energy Plan. So, I guess I didn't understand your generalization.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And my question really points to the fact that when citizens asked yesterday during public comment about undergrounding the lines, the response was, that's going to cost too much. It'll be 10 times more expensive. So, it was, you know, just easily dismissed as that's not an affordable option for us. So, that would lead me to assume that when you're going before the P U C, you're not advocating for undergrounding lines because you just said that's going to be too expensive.
I think the, you know, I want to address one thing. There's three things that Excel Energy keeps first and foremost at the center of everything that we do. It's reliability, it's safety, and it's affordability. Those are the three prisms that we look for through every plan that I mentioned that we bring in front of the Public Utilities Commission. Bringing, you know, yes, you are correct, it is exponentially more expensive to bury transmission lines. That's why we don't have it as an industry best practice to do that around the state. Parker mentioned a number of different places that we have, a couple systematic places where we do underground transmission lines, but for the most case, the industry best practice to build it overhead. And that hits on, not only from the reliability aspect of getting the Colorado Pathways Project done and built safely and efficiently, but also affordable.
And I think what we heard from county residents yesterday is, to your point on safety, there is a significant concern, not just from the residents, but also from county staff, that it's exactly that component of the overhead lines that are concerning to a lot of Elbert County residents. And it's something that, of course, all of us have to consider as we look at this application. I'm going to go ahead and move on. A lot of folks talked about their concern with a decrease in property values, and I don't recall that that specific discussion was had in your remarks, at least not extensively. I heard somewhere, anywhere between like 5% to up to like 50%. So, I'd like you guys to comment about how this is going to impact, what your response is to the families who are near or have the land that these transmission lines will be on, about the decrease of their property values, please.
We're going to invite Mr. We're going to invite Mr. Hamilton with JLL to speak on this.
Hi, I'm Tom Hamilton with JLL.
You're going to have to get a little closer to that mic and speak up, please.
Hello, I'm Tom Hamilton with JLL.
And JLL is what?
JLL, the group I work with is Valuation Advisory Services. I'm an appraiser.
Sorry, what does JLL stand for? Thank you.
I believe it's Jones Lang LaSalle. It really means JLL, but it derives from the former company name, Jones Lang LaSalle.
Yeah, helps me to know that you're an accounting firm.
Excuse me?
So keep going.
I'm a professional appraiser. I'm also an academic, retired. And the property value diminution that was mentioned here, we've done research on this as a group for the last 40 years, across different corridors, electric power lines, high-voltage transmission lines. And looking at the types of research that other people have done in this matter, when it comes to view, there are no academic studies, there's no professional studies of data that shows that there is a reduction in value due to view.
Okay, well, you clarified that with the word "view," so I'm assuming that there is a reduction in value based on other things. Can you elaborate, please?
There are studies, both professional and academic studies, that go through and look at properties that are affected by transmission lines that are on top of properties. So, for instance, if a transmission line bisects a property, is along its boundary, it basically resides upon the property owner's property, there could be a reduction in value in that property. That's why there is a compensation for putting a transmission line on top of property is for the compensation of the use of that property and the value effects of that transmission line.
When you say that there is, what are we talking? What kind of percentages?
The studies that I've looked at are inconclusive at best. There are studies that actually show that there are...
I'm sure there are numbers. So what numbers have you read?
Oh, the numbers typically go from positive 2%, 3%, all the way down to maybe minus 10%. And again, those studies are the studies that have statistical basis for them.
Do you know the name of some of those studies?
I can get those for you. I don't have them off the top of my head, the names of the studies.
Do you know, thinking back to the studies that you're referring to, do you know if any of those studies were of cities or farmland, rural areas?
The studies have run the spectrum of being in urban areas, they've been in rural areas, they've been in active agricultural areas.
I would assume that in a city, seeing a transmission line might not matter as much to a city dweller who's seeing a lot of different city infrastructure all the time. But I think that this brings me back to my point about rural counties, is that rural counties have a certain type of character that is about being able to enjoy the county, its scenic views, have space away from the city. And I would imagine that those who are moving out of the city don't expect to see transmission lines. So I would wonder if there's a study out there that actually specifies in particular, in rural areas or agricultural areas where people have moved away from the city, whether or not the depreciation is larger for those property owners.
Some of the studies that I can get you the list for were done in rural areas in the Midwest. There've been other studies around the country. For the most part, these studies have shown, and again, from a statistical perspective, which these studies are based on, is it's inconclusive.
Alright, thank you. I have, I'd like to move on to a different topic. We talked some about fire concerns yesterday. I brought it up for a moment earlier, but I just wanted to maybe give the applicant the opportunity to clarify, but what I heard yesterday was that when fire concerns were raised, that the response from the applicant was that the county could use the money from the cost of construction, or what you called our impact fee, to create a wildfire mitigation plan, if that's what we wanted. And to me, that just kind of seemed like a flippant response. I think I read in the responses to referral agencies that someone asked, I think it was one of the fire departments asked about a fire mitigation plan and your ability to help provide that for the county. And the applicant's response was, we'd be happy to participate if you decide that you want to start, if you decide that you want to pay for a fire mitigation plan. So I just wanted to follow up on that comment to see, maybe I misunderstood. But it would seem to me that if safety is one of your, you know, primary pillars, that a fire mitigation plan for a county like us with transmission lines running for as many miles as they do in your proposal, that that would be a priority.
I'll address some, and Andrew and others may want to speak on this as well. To clarify, if that was a statement that I made that you're referring to, the, we as a utility conduct wildfire mitigation planning on a state level in all of the areas that we have facilities that covers our transmission and distribution. That plan is available, was shared with the county. We host a webpage to provide information. We file that with the PUC, and so that information is readily available. So certainly, we conduct our own wildfire mitigation planning and share that that way. In addition, we were asked to provide a wildfire mitigation plan and information on wildfire mitigation and risk reduction during construction, which we did also provide to the county in our application materials and responses to applications. The comment made about using the fees if the county elected to do so was in regard to what we heard from fire districts and others about a community wildfire plan. So in the event that Elbert County is looking more broadly, we heard comments about not maybe having sufficient or the right equipment to fight wildfires, that there is already strained resources in the community as a whole. We can't and don't have the information to conduct community wildfire mitigation studies more broadly about should Elbert County cut down trees or mow differently along county roadways. That's not something we would do. We just analyze wildfire risk and mitigation strategies as they relate to our facilities. And we have and continue to work with fire districts here and across the state, OEMs as well, to talk about wildfire mitigation, wildfire risk, and what we're doing in relation to our assets.
But certainly, you would understand that the conversations are coming up, particularly with the fire districts, because of the fact that your application is before them, and they see that there is an increased risk of fire danger if these transmission lines are built. So is there not some type of responsibility that Excel has to our community to be a part of planning that mitigation plan?
Yeah, and we offered and continue to offer to work with the fire districts regarding concerns and questions and planning. We met with Kiowa Fire District. I think Andrew described that and continue to work to, together to develop those plans. We also participate and fire districts and OEMs participate in desktop exercises and other things that we are also part of. So certainly, where we have facilities, we work with the wildfire districts, or the fire districts and the OEMs to support that.
So, I mean, it sounds like you're saying, we're happy to talk to you about it, but we're not going to give you any money or any resources to help you fight a fire if our transmission lines cause it. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think to the extent in our response to comments indicated, if a fire district has a published fee schedule that has and requires fees of sorts, then we're obligated, and we're obligated to pay those if it's in accordance with the Colorado statutes, we will certainly do that. And if those funds are used to get resources, then I think that's up to that fire district.
So you will only be paying if the state, there's a plan in place that's already been pre-approved by the state. Otherwise, you're not willing to help our fire departments?
I think we can, I think we continue to work with the fire departments to understand what it is that is needed. To date, what I believe we've been provided is an indication that folks believe there's an increased wildfire risk. We are sharing with you all and have shared with you all the information that we have on what we think wildfire risk is, what our response and our plans and our mitigation plans are in those areas based on that wildfire tier mapping, what we do put in place, what we do provide, and how we work with communities that have our facilities within them. Do I think that there is maybe not an alignment in terms of a line being present and what that wildfire risk is and what that means in terms of resources? I don't know that I've seen very concrete information about that as an example. So is the ask from a fire district for this piece of equipment for this reason? We don't have any specifics. We've only seen to date from one fire district, a fee ask related to our infrastructure being installed.
So it seems like you're downplaying the concerns of the fire districts, which is problematic to me, because of course, that undermines the health, the safety of every Elbert County resident. It also feels like perhaps because of our fire departments, our volunteer fire departments, that maybe they're getting, you know, taken to the bank here for not having the right policies or procedures in place that would require your company to fund them in a way that would demonstrate your commitment to fighting fires if that were to happen here in our community. I applaud you for your work at the state level, but that doesn't help our community. And it certainly doesn't help our community if your transmission lines start a fire.
I think that if there is a direct ask for what is needed and it's correlated to risk related to our facilities, we would certainly evaluate that broad assertions that our lines are going to cause fire or increase risk differently than the fact that our lines exist today and have operated here today for years in this county and have not caused a fire. We operate our facilities in rural fire districts across the state of Colorado. Eastern Colorado, the mountain towns, the western slope, all are in the same position in many instances with volunteer fire districts. And we have constructed and installed over 200 miles of pathway in rural areas and have supported that and worked with fire districts and first responders accordingly in those jurisdictions. That is not any different than what we're offering to do and have done for Elbert County and with Elbert County fire districts to date. There is more conversation to come with those fire districts, and we will have those conversations and continue to work together to find that path forward.
Well, I appreciate that. It does seem that while you have had conversations, there's not an agreement with all of our fire districts and with Excel on what that fire mitigation should look like and what your involvement should be. And that concerns me, particularly because it feels like a big corporation is steamrolling a volunteer fire department, or even steamrolling a rural county that doesn't have all of the policies in place. But I'd like to go ahead and move to my final topic. This has to do more with our discussion of eminent domain. I had a few follow-up questions to our discussion earlier. One question I just had for clarification was, how many landowners have this transmission line going through their property? Do you guys have that total number?
Across the entirety of pathway?
In Elbert County.
In Elbert County, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, 54? Forty-eight, and then we have additional that have temporary construction areas on it that I think get us to 54. So 48 total.
Okay, so 48 that actually will have, that you're working with landowners of those properties. And then I just wanted to clarify, so, and then of that, you've got 20, you've got 13 that are currently in eminent domain proceedings, is that right?
That's correct.
And then what number of properties have agreed to a lease agreement with you?
We have 27 that we have acquired our easement on.
Okay, that have the easement. And then how many does that leave that don't have easement but haven't started eminent domain proceedings?
We can do the quick math there, single digits, I think that we're still in negotiation with.
Okay. So nine or less, is that what the number was?
Yeah, I think so.
About?
Andrew's math comes up with eight.
Okay, so then, so then that means with the 13 that you've already started eminent domain proceedings, plus about nine more are what you're waiting on to get like your final property rights for this pathway complete? Is that accurate? If you had to guess, and I know it's a guessing game, but how long would you say you think it would take for you to go ahead and get access to all of those 48 properties for the Elbert County section? What's that timeline?
Again, it's a little hard to guess. In terms of instances where we may be moving through the condemnation process and scheduling immediate possession hearings, that those can get scheduled months out, depending on availability of landowners and their counsel and our counsel. So, you know, I think we, we schedule would like to have the land rights in place this fall. That could easily, I think, extend into later this year or beyond, depending.
Okay. I want to get your assessment of a, part of the criteria, actually, from Article 17 M1A in the 1041 regulations. At the tail end of the criteria, it says, "The B OCC may at its discretion defer making a final decision on the application until outstanding property rights, permits, and approvals are obtained, including right-of-way or easement." I understand that there is a timeline that has been mandated by the state of Colorado, and I wanted to get your thoughts on whether or not that timeline overrides this condition in the criteria.
I think what you may be asking is whether, it's my opinion, that the statutory timelines in terms of taking action on the application would override or supersede that?
Yes, Colorado's mandate to, that this move forward.
I believe that they could, yes.
And can you remind me again what that final date is for determination in whether or not this moves forward, this project?
I can pull up the dates, but it's a number of deadlines related to different milestones that are set forth in that statute, and we can reference the statute if you'd like to look at it.
Well, I thought that our county has to make a decision by a specific date. That's not necessarily by statute, but...
Yeah, in terms of the timeline that we've agreed on with the county, July 10th is that deadline.
And then, this is my last question, but is Excel preparing to sue Elbert County if this project doesn't get approval? this project doesn't get approval?
I think as, as we've discussed in our CP CN filing and shared, in the event that any jurisdiction, Albert County or others, deny our application, we do evaluate our options in terms of working within our PUC backstop authority or other forms of district court appeal and such. That is the case and something we evaluate in all land use applications, not just specifically related to Albert.
Have you started preparing, has EXCEL started preparing for that for Albert County?
Started preparing, I don't know in what form you're asking.
To sue, to sue Albert County.
Again, in the event that we are, our application is denied, we would evaluate if that is an avenue that we would need to take. So are the discussions about that, are the, the possibilities this? Of course, we acknowledge that in our CP CN filing that in the event that a land use application were denied, we would need to consider those options based on the reasons and the rationale for the denial.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on real quick, we're losing about half the, the audience and half the, the planning commission. Okay, well, let's take a seven-minute bio break and then come back. Yeah, well, we'll get back here at eight forty-five. Let's just do eight forty-five. If you're ready to start asking questions. Okay, folks, we're ready.
My first, first couple of questions are going to be for staff. So at the time of submittal, not counting that initial submittal, how many incomplete letters did you guys send out to the applicant?
Commissioner, the question was, in addition to the, not counting the first?
Not counting the initial submittal.
Not counting the initial submittal, how many completeness review letters were sent?
Yes.
Okay, that would be two after the initial, the initial letter that was sent with the initial submittal. There were two more letters.
And how long did county and its consultants take to review each time?
The review time for the, the first submittal, so November seventh, the ten forty-one letter was provided December thirtieth, I believe, I think, within twenty-eight days per the state statute. In, in the presentation, I think I have the dates. The S U R review wa, letter was provided, I believe, January thirtieth. And then from then, and then after that, everything was kept together in lockstep with both applications.
Okay, and how long did the applicant take to then resubmit their incomplete applications?
Oh, let me, I will need to look that information up. On, on average?
Average is fine now.
On average, four to six weeks.
Okay. And then was the July tenth deadline that you guys agreed upon, county and applicant, determined after they sent the letter to proceed to hearings? Or was that at a date determined prior to that?
The question is, was the July tenth date decided before or after the applicant provided notice they wanted to proceed?
To a hearing, yes, with an incomplete application.
With an incomplete application.
When was the July tenth deadline, I guess, established between staff and, and the applicant?
The July tenth deadline was established after the applicant wanted to proceed to hearing. It, it was a change from an earlier deadline that was agreed upon. I can't remember what date that was, but it was in a, it was an extension from an earlier date that had been agreed upon.
But it was an extension based on incomplete application, right?
Well, yes, that is correct still, yes.
Thank you. So a couple of questions then for the applicant. Was an environmental assessment or any type of NEPA done? For the applicant?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Was there any NEPA, environmental, historical, section one oh six?
No, there was not.
So we're going fifty miles of overhead transmission lines and there's no environmental review?
No, there was no environmental review conducted under NEPA, provided in our application was an assessment of impacts. We conduct and will continue to conduct natural resource surveys as we have access to properties. We've conducted what we can windshield or from public rights of way, for example, for review of different sensitive species, wetlands review and so on. So the environmental review is conducted outside of a requirement to do so under NEPA.
Okay, are you guys conducting that internally or do you have a consultant do that for you?
We have consultants that do that work for us.
Who is your consultant?
Tetra Tech.
So who did your archaeological survey?
So we have Tetra Tech archaeologists supporting the project and doing the cultural resources review.
So there's three, in your survey, there's three points of interest or points of artifact. Are you aware of that?
In terms of resources.
Where your path goes through, there's three points of archaeological, historical points of interest that your path runs through?
Sure, as identified based on recorded cultural resources.
As, however you proceeded to get them, yeah. What are you doing to mitigate that by not going through those?
So we designate based on cultural and natural resources review, what we'll, what I'll just call constraint areas, they're mapped, that can be natural resource constraints, cultural resource constraints, or other considerations. We designate those when appropriate as, as, for example, no access areas. We can span them with our transmission line. We can designate access to go around them or to approach the structures from either side and not have a need to cross those. That happens a lot with our planning around water resources and wetlands and so on.
So the three that are in the survey that your transmission line is going through, how are you directly mitigating those three?
I'll ask if you can pull up AGO and take a look, depending on whether they're resources that are, are eligible and need to be protected. There's a number of factors, but we'll, we'll see if we can look at those. We can't share the information broadly. The, the cultural resource information is protected, so I won't be able to give you super specific details outside of what we can share publicly.
Yeah, I'm not asking for the details. I can see the map. What I'm asking is how do you guys typically mitigate not building a tower or multiple towers within those points of interest?
Yeah, we, we design around them, so we conduct the reviews, we identify the resources, and we look for pole locations.
So since they're only considered recommendations to avoid points of interest, do you guys still take in those considerations or are you just saying that?
No, we absolutely avoid sensitive resources.
Okay. So going back, I saw you guys worked with CPW and then U S Fish and Wildlife Services, correct?
That's correct.
Do you guys conduct your U S Fish and Wildlife Service protocols as per CPW requested?
I'd, I'd like to ask you to clarify which protocols you're specifically referencing.
So CPW recommended that you issue specific survey protocols done by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service in order to determine habitat areas in your path? Have those surveys been done by your consultant, Tetra Tech?
Where we're able to and have access, we have conducted, for example, raptor nest surveys, certain survey protocols, like for example, burrowing owls, right? Those, that, those surveys need to be done at certain times of the year, and then they need to be done, are typically done closer to construction. So we do a broader assessment and review and identification at this stage of the project, and then we'll conduct some of those pre-construction clearance type surveys as we get closer to construction. So not all of them have been done, but they will be done as appropriate before construction.
Thank you. So with that, what is exactly your construction's start date within Albert County?
The, the construction start date, I believe I had on slide yesterday. As I was mentioning, we are sequencing construction in Albert, or excuse me, in segment five based on what we anticipate for permit approvals and completion of our land acquisition. So I believe we currently expect construction in Albert County to occur in twenty twenty-six and complete in twenty twenty-seven.
What quarter are you talking, third quarter, fourth quarter?
Currently, we have, looks like end of, of Q two for start in twenty twenty-six.
But then finishing maybe when, when in Q, when in twenty twenty-seven?
Q two in twenty twenty-seven.
So part of the CPW recommendation was?
Excuse me, it's Q three in twenty twenty-six. I need to count my quarters correctly.
So Q three in twenty twenty-six until when?
Q two of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. So part of CPW's recommendation, there's multiples of them, you're going through multiple either severe or concentrated mule deer winter ranges. They've recommended not doing construction in these areas between the months of December and April. Would you follow those recommendations?
We indicated in our response to comments provided to the county that if we can, we will avoid construction in that timeframe. Their recommendations also indicate if we cannot do that, that we have monitors and take other precautions and we'll do that as.
Yeah, and again, these are just recommendations. And then also for the burrowing owl, there's, they have recommended dates as well, or two hundred meter buffer zone. If you guys come into habitat with burrowing, burrowing owl, would you guys move your towers two hundred meters away from that habitat or would you go through the recommended dates? Or would you just see, try your best to do either one?
I don't think we would at this point plan to, to shift our towers, though the birds, burrowing owls can, can nest and move even very quickly within a season, so it would be hard to base the structure locations on like prior year's nest survey, for example. We would certainly avoid, try to avoid impact during the nesting season again, and if not, we regularly work and construct within burrowing owl habitat and employ monitors to observe and ensure that they're not being disturbed. Our biological monitors have the ability to stop work if needed if they observe wildlife disturbance of any kind, and then we also coordinate with CPW in that approach being very typical for our projects across the state.
So the next one with them was the swift fox. You guys noted you had ongoing survey efforts back in September twenty twenty-four. Did you finish those surveys?
I believe that we did not identify swift fox denning habitat.
Perfect. Was there anything in more detail that CPW may have missed that U S Fish and Wildlife had called out?
So CPW and U S Fish and Wildlife Service, right, monitor are responsible for state-listed species with CPW and federal listed species with Fish and Wildlife Service. I don't know if we have a comparison between the two, that they were different, but. But in, in general, we, we work with both U S Fish and Wildlife Service and CPW on recommendations regarding species and surveys and coordinate if, if needed on construction impact.
Okay, so then it's still staying on environmental. How many towers, I guess, are proposed within Albert County?
Oh, good question. Does anyone have the number? Two seventy-five? Two hundred seventy-five.
And what's the average span between towers?
Nine fifty is, I think, holding true here.
And I guess so transmission lines aren't entitled then to go through SHPO? You guys weren't required to go through the state historical preservation office?
Not in the sense of like a section one oh six consultation review. That's correct.
Did you guys reach out to them at all?
We obtain publicly available, well, not publicly available. We obtain records, we conduct records research and evaluate that regardless of whether we are conducting a one oh six process or not.
Okay, but nothing was actually done between the, the state historical preservation office, right? I mean, I'm not, not saying that you're required to do that, just out of curiosity.
We did reach out to SHPO as part of the project in general. SHPO indicated to us that they only wanted to talk to federal agencies that may be involved in the project and, and not, you know, with, coordinate with us directly, so.
So then with that, is this power line project, transmission line project, is, is this privately funded fully? Are you guys getting any state or federal grants for this?
I don't believe we're getting any state or federal grants. It's, it's privately funded.
Okay. Last thing on kind of an environmental, you do know that Albert County does hold an elk species habitat, correct? Because that was missing on your big game species map. There was not a, an elk habitat area within your power lines or your mapping system.
We can double check the map, but yes, we're, we'll, we'll double check the, the high priority habitat and the CPWs.
Big game, you had froghorn, mule deer, whitetail, but you were missing elk. Just wanted to make sure that's called out and where.
Okay. It looks like that's been added to the map that was submitted in our most recent information to the county.
Was it submitted after you provided notice of hearing or, because it's not up to date within the exhibits that are provided?
It was, it was in response to CPW comments, it was in response, or responses to referral comments.
And those were provided to the county?
Yes, on May twenty-seventh. And then again, some supplemental information recently.
May twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, we, the referral comments, our responses to referral comments were due back to Albert County on that date, and that's when we provided them.
Okay, thank you for the environmental answers on that. So kind of moving on to just the benefit to Albert County. Will any of this line be available to Albert County power providers, either Mountain View, Core, at this time? I mean, I know it was asked before, but is there a solid contract in place that, that Core Mountain View can use that power?
So it, I can't, I, I'm not the one who negotiates the contracts, so I can't say for, excuse me, for certain. Colorado does have open access transmission, so even if we don't have a contract with them currently, if they elect to apply to interconnect, we would evaluate that and, and potentially have a contract in place.
Okay. And then you kind of noted in your guys' presentation about the benefit that could be potential for citizens as jobs during construction. How many jobs are you guys planning to allocate for Albert County citizens?
I don't know if we have specific information on that. Albert County jobs.
For construction, project management?
It would probably be related to, to, to services that we might get.
Is there any contractors being used that are located within Albert County? And those have been defined, do you have names of those?
Yeah, so I, I think we've talked about the Town of Simla Water Contract as one example.
How many employees does, how many Albert County citizens does that employ?
I'm not sure of their employment.
Okay, so we have one Town of Simla Water Contract. What about anything else?
I don't know if our team has the information at hand. We, we can have more specifics available.
So as part of the approval criteria on this, it needs to be a benefit to Albert County, so what is the benefit to Albert County?
So I think in terms of a number of specifics, we'll get additional information on any local employment or opportunities. Certainly, our construction contractors will take, use local services where possible, food, restaurants, purchasing things at the stores, fuel. We talked about the water, if there's ability to use.
What about, what about long-term benefits, not temporary construction benefits?
So long-term benefits, we've talked about the fees that Albert County may elect to assess if the application is approved. We have taxes that we've talked about. We also have long-term reliability being a benefit to the state of Colorado, including Albert County residences. I can't speak to whether there's any Albert County residents that are investors in, in EXCEL. That would be another opportunity for local benefit. You know, in addition, partnerships that Andrew mentioned yesterday. And then in the event that local service providers do connect to pathway to serve local loads, that would be a potential future benefit as well.
So realistically, the benefit, in, in real words, is minimal. I mean, sponsoring rodeo, eating at restaurants doesn't really benefit the Albert County as a whole. Would you agree?
I don't know that I would agree, but I don't know that I need to agree either.
So how many of these two hundred and seventy-five poles, right, Parker? Is that what you said? How many of these are within existing right-of-way?
I, I don't, I think none of them would be within existing right-of-way. I don't, I think none of them would be within existing right-of-way. There is a portion of some of the route that would overlap with existing right-of-ways. So for example, along Highway 86, that 150-foot right-of-way that we've been talking about is typical. We are able to overlap a portion of that 150-foot right-of-way with the CDOT right-of-way for Highway 86. And so there is some overlap there, which reduces the right-of-way needed on the private landowner.
You said your construction cost was 1.7 billion for the entire project, correct?
That's correct.
Out of that, do you, is that, have any allocation specifically for easement acquisitions?
It does.
Do you have a percentage of what that is?
I do not have it in front of me. I don't know if anyone can look that up, or I'll try and look it up.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial to know, what amount of that 1.7 is actually going to land acquisition. With that, you kind of noted this before, but, and you stated it on record, every property owner that you guys are going through was presented with some type of option, some type of easement, some type of consideration, correct?
We pay for the land rights that we obtain, yes.
No, what I'm asking is, was there an offer presented? How many, you said there's 54 people that you're dealing with through Albert County, right? All 54 were presented with an actual final offer, either an option agreement for an easement or an easement for them to sign?
Matt can double-check me. I will say that that is my understanding. In some instances, over the lifetime of the project, we have had landowners refuse to take receipt of that information and those offers, but I don't think we're in that situation currently.
So, okay, with that then, under your eminent domain, if you have a refusal, is mailing, I guess, enough notice for you guys to then proceed with filing on eminent domain or condemnation?
We need to provide the notice, and we do provide the notice in a form that we can track delivery and demonstrate proof of delivery.
I'm just really having a hard time, because there was a gentleman, and this was brought up yesterday, that stated he, the only contact he's had with your company was a letter of condemnation he received. Is that, are you stating that's a false accusation?
I can't speak to the individual negotiation, but it doesn't sound correct to me.
Part of these conversations-
Our first communication with landowners is never filing condemnation.
As the first communication, is that what you said?
Yeah, first and only. That would not be our process at all. We certainly work to speak with individuals directly, communicate about the project. Early on, as I mentioned, when we started in 2023, we were working and requesting right-of-entry from landowners, so we were engaging with folks then if they wanted to provide that. We also extended option offers to landowners as part of Pathway and assessed whether folks had an interest in that, continued to talk about terms of the easement or compensation numbers with folks. As I mentioned, if an individual chose not to engage with us during those processes, then that is possible. But they then would have received, in the event that we started condemnation processes, notice of intent with proof of delivery, that we know that those were delivered to the address of record, and then proceeded if we did not get responses through the filings.
So when you guys are purchasing easements, and I take it none of these are, you're not leasing any ground, right?
That's correct, not in the way you would think of a lease for like a renewable generation project or something.
What about for payments? Are you offering them a one-time compensation, or are you doing annual?
It's a one-time payment.
So there's precedent for other utilities such as fiber in the state of Colorado, where CDOT as such will require private companies then to use their right-of-way in making a initial compensation and then along with annual compensation as fair compensation? Was that ever presented as an option to any of the landowners?
Annual payments or scheduled payments beyond a single one-time payment were not-
Yeah, as the state of Colorado is requiring for other type of utilities.
I, I'm not sure if what you're referring to are utilities being placed in-
Yeah, so the state of Colorado under C-
State of Colorado right-of-way.
Under CDOT, right, will require fiber companies to make an initial compensation amount plus annual compensation as part of their easement?
Yeah.
Is that something that you guys explored with your landowners?
No, it is not.
As part of these easements, what are landowners allowed to do with that property under your guys', under easement language? Can they utilize that property for recreation? Can they build on that easement?
They cannot build structures within that easement, no.
And the easement, you said, is 150 feet wide?
That's correct. Generally, except in instances, as I was just mentioning earlier, where we're overlapping a public right-of-way, like a road, and it may be less.
Can they hunt on that easement?
Yes.
Can they four-wheel drive on that easement?
Yes.
So you're stating that the only thing that they can't do is build on that easement, correct?
They cannot build structures on that easement. They cannot place tall growing trees within that easement. They cannot put a wellhead in that easement.
So they can use the topsoil basically for recreational purposes, and that's pretty much it, right?
Yeah, agricultural.
I mean, could they, could they crop it if they wanted to?
Yep.
But you guys would have the right, if you needed to, to drive over that crop, correct?
We, yes, we would. In the event that we, for example, for an emergency repair that we couldn't schedule, if we had to drive through the crop, we would. And if there were crop damages, they would be compensated according to the crop damage policy.
Okay, moving on, I was kind of looking at your guys' decommission plan, which was shockingly four pages, I believe. In the event, have you offered to provide a security bond to the county for the removal of that transmission line? Or, I've noted in that decommission plan, you would be open to considering it via condition of approval?
In terms of decommissioning a transmission line, we don't decommission our transmission lines with very few exceptions. Our transmission lines, we have transmission lines in the state that are nearly 100 years old that we continue to maintain and operate, unlike maybe a renewable generation project that has a lifetime of 20 years, 30 years, you know, depending. We don't decommission. In the event that we were to decommission, we would have a plan approved by the PUC to do so, and it would specify the requirements in that decommissioning.
So let's say in 200 years, that power, that transmission line is no longer in use, Excel or its survivor, surviving company would not be responsible for removing that, correct?
I believe the PUC would dictate whether we are responsible and probably would make us responsible for decommissioning that.
So they would have, at that point in time, they would have a discussion and then either the approval or denial for you to remove it? It's not set in stone right now?
Yeah, yeah, in terms of, would they approve or review a decommissioning plan and make that determination? Yes.
Yeah, but is Excel Energy at the mercy of the commission to decommission that? Or is that something you guys would be willing to do just out of your own company? Kind of, I don't even know the word for it, but just out of-
I'm not sure that I am the decision-maker on whether we would consider a decommissioning bond, if that's what you're asking for. I could take that back.
Was there a traffic planned, kind of implemented during this project to figure out how much traffic will be impacted? Because a lot of these areas are going through more heavily populated areas like Simla, Kiowa. How will the construction impact traffic through those towns?
Yeah, we provided some information on anticipated traffic in our application. As we move towards construction, we have and would put in place, assuming we have approval in Albert County, a road use agreement that would provide and dictate what routes we can use for construction traffic, what we anticipate the level of traffic being, if there are any improvements needed in order to support the construction, and then what the requirements would be for repair of any damage caused to the roads.
Okay, moving on to our subdivision requirement, do you know how many subdivisions you guys are within a quarter mile of?
I believe it's six.
It's seven, according to your map. But as one of our approval criterias, unless it's approved by the BOCC, is there a reason why you guys chose to be within that quarter-mile buffer?
Yeah, in the case of co-location being something that the county could approve for being within the quarter-mile, again, where we're co-located along the Core Line, for example, we believe that is the best place for that line to be placed. And so where we're within that difference, it's based on the possibility of co-locating and the county approving that.
You stated earlier that none of the towers would be lit. Did you do FAA determination on all 275 towers?
Parker, do you want to speak to that?
Yes.
And you got letters of determination of no hazard for all of them?
They don't actually, so, the way the process works is they have an online hazard tool. You use the online hazard tool, put in each location, and then if the online hazard tool requires you to submit, then you submit, and then they will determine no hazard required. So every single structure has been submitted if required by the FAA.
And you received, for the ones that were-
Yep, no hazard, yep.
You got no hazard.
The entire project doesn't have any lit towers, all-
Okay, I saw you're pushing it at 199, but I saw you're under 200 feet, so.
Yeah, we always say 199 to, you know, keep it under 200, so.
Moving on to screening and buffering, per your seminal, you expressed landscaping buffering will not be completed as the pathway will include vegetation, topography, and buildings, as they will act as natural screens and decrease potential views. Can you explain in some detail how the local vegetation, topography, and buildings will screen miles of 100 to 199-foot towers?
Sure, that statement in full context is not intended to indicate that the line is fully screened, as-
No, but is there any landscaping?
We're not proposing any landscaping, no.
So was there anything done for any type of screening or buffering as per the approval criteria?
Was there, I'm sorry, the first-
Have you guys determined or mitigated any way to do any type of screening or buffering, even if it's the ground space, per the approval criteria?
We conducted a visual analysis. We prepared the simulations. We are not proposing to install any landscaping as part of the project.
What about vegetation replacement, in the sense of removal of trees?
So, as explained in our materials provided to the county, we, where we have to remove trees, that is part of, you know, it's up to the landowner. We can't require them to place trees or plant trees on their property. They can elect to move the trees elsewhere if they would like to. They can elect to take compensation dollars and plant trees. We don't control that or dictate that for the landowners.
So if the landowner wanted to move trees, that would be at his or her expense?
Yes.
Moving on to your routing considerations, what is the shortest distance from the proposed route to the nearest residential dwelling?
I believe we have that in the application. We'll pull that.
And then while you're doing that, can you pull the shortest distance to the nearest commercial ag or business structure? And then also the shortest distance of that line to a filed subdivision? And a school? While they're looking into that, how much water do you guys plan on taking from the Town of Simla?
Do you have the, we'll find the contract amount?
Hey, Kyle?
Yes, sir.
If you go to, it's just kind of an interesting factoid, if you go to page 954 of our package.
Let me pull that up.
Yep. There's a series of about four or five maps showing residential structures.
Does it have the, does it have the actual distance?
It's at scale, but-
I would just like it to be on the record of what that actual distance is. I mean, are we thinking for residential structure, we're within 50 feet of some of those structures?
No, I don't believe we have any structures located within our easement. So they would be at a minimum 75 feet away.
Do you have any that are 76 feet away?
Not that, I don't believe so, no.
How are we looking at getting commercial ag or business distances?
Lot of pages to search through, but I'm sure they're working as quickly as they can.
Yeah, and I know it's taking up some time to look for that, but I do think it's important to get that called out for our citizens to actually know how close some of these businesses and residential areas are going to be towards a massive transmission line.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if staff would like to speak to their review of the application. It's my, I'm looking at comments provided that indicate, from staff, the proposed project route through Albert County meets required setbacks.
Yeah, I understand it meets required setbacks per what was submitted, possibly, but it's still, I would like to know. I mean, you're coming through a bunch of residential homes, subdivisions, schools, and it's kind of disheartening that that information is taking five-plus minutes to obtain.
Yeah, the information is in our application. We're just pulling it. We didn't, you know, if we had had the questions in advance, we would have gladly been prepared to answer that. So we're just searching the information out.
I mean, I guess it goes both ways, right? If we would have had a complete application, I probably wouldn't be asking you as many questions.
We believe our application was complete.
Cheryl, would you like, while they look for that, to move on? That's my, kind of my wrapped-up questions.
Yeah, I concur. Let's go ahead and move on.
One hazard of sitting on the end. Most of my colleagues ask most of the questions, so I need to filter through here for the things that I want to ask. If you'll indulge me for a second here. I wanted to get down into some of the nitty-gritty, just so some of these things can get asked of you with our citizens here. When you go in to put in one of these towers into somebody's property, how many trucks do you estimate it's going to take to go into that property and put that structure up?
Parker's back to the mic.
So I'll, by trucks, you kind of mean like semi-type trucks, I assume, or things like that, okay. So the typical towers are three sections, so there's three pieces that get put together. So that's typically on, typically one at a time pulled into the site, so that's three. And then the arms that are on the structure are brought in as one set, so that'd be a fourth. The anchor bolt cage, which goes in the ground, is the- The anchor bolt cage, which goes in the ground as part of the foundation, would be on a truck as well, so that's about five. And then you'd have the concrete trucks that would pour the concrete, and that would vary on the size of the foundation, but somewhere between, you know, four and 10 trucks of concrete, depending on the foundation depth and diameter. So something to that effect.
Hey, well, that seems like an awful lot of... That's a big footprint to be putting in somebody's property, not just the structure itself, but... It would be a little bit unwelcoming, I would think. But you can stay there because these are probably going to be your questions anyway. Once you go in there and you drive all these semis through this nice pasture that these people have, what are you going to do when you drive out of there? What do you do to put it back to where it was before you went traipsing through it?
Yep, so we'll have a stormwater management plan, which will require bringing it back to its original state. I believe the statute's 70% of like the growth of the grass or whatever's there. Our construction specification requires that the contractor back drag, so basically re-till the soil after the construction's complete as part of the reclamation process, and then the seeding process takes place. Some landowners allow us to leave two-track, like road, in, and they may use or allow us to continue to use, depending on what they're doing on the property, things like that, so... But we do bring it back, I would say, to the landowner's satisfaction of whether it's ag or pasture, or, you know, whatever they were using it for before that.
Okay, and I'm hoping that you're going to notify these people before you're going to bring the truck in, is that right?
Yeah, there's land agents that work with construction to, you know, basically allow everyone to know when they'll be coming in and communicating the process so that it's not just a surprise that a truck pulls into the property, you know, on Tuesday and they didn't expect it.
Yeah, okay. Also, well, I wanted to know what you're going to do for screening also, since it says here that we have to have, to be used is adequate landscaping, buffering, and screening. That's what's in our EZCR. Another question I have is, what kind of mitigation, if any, do you have for cross-contamination for animals?
Could you explain what you mean by cross-contamination?
So, we have a bunch of chickens. I don't want somebody's house from six miles away, I don't want there's anything from their property brought onto my property.
I see what you're saying, like during construction, like the dust and tracking and things like that.
Yeah, there needs to be a contamination sort of mitigation.
Yeah, so we deploy like water trucks and things like that to keep the dust mitigation down. If there's specific concerns, I'm sure we could take those and address them.
Well, there's so much bird flu and everything else. I don't want anybody, I would not want anyone's trucks to go from one neighbor to the next neighbor to the next neighbor. I just don't think that's appropriate at all or right.
I don't know that I have seen that issue raised by any of the landowners we're talking with. If they were to express concern, I mean, we certainly work, for example, with organic farms and understanding, you know, specific requirements and things like that, so...
This county is very organic.
The details around specific interactions would be in the landowner agreements and what's negotiated with each of them.
Okay, well, I think they need to know that they have that option to agree, to ask for that, which is why I'm bringing it up. Let's see, I only have a couple others now, because...
And I did just want to mention, you brought up, mentioned again, it would be helpful to understand on the screening, again, in the county's review and response of our applications, it was noted that the county does not have development standards or requirements specific for major utility services in regards to landscape buffering or screening requirements.
Okay, and another concern I have is the emergency management says that there is unresolved, it's unresolved regarding proof of fire protection with Elbert County's Office of Emergency Management. There's other spots in here, obviously, that you know about. Corelectric says there's unresolved transmission line easement and encroachments for them that they're not satisfied with, and the most important one to me on here is the unresolved proximity to the school for health and hazards and threat of fire from the Kiowa School District. I think those things need to be a contingent to any kind of approval. I think those things have to be addressed before any approval could go forward.
I do have an update. We did get an email from Corelectric at 5:30 PM Mountain Time today that said that they are, they have no further comments. They're working with Excel through the process, and they did not, I can copy, print the email and include it in the record, but, or read it now, but essentially they had no more concerns with the Elbert County process moving forward.
All right, well, that's good. But I think the school and the OEM definitely need to be resolved before, as a contingency, but...
Understood, noted.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Dee. Van?
Actually, I had a couple of questions. I had a couple of questions, but they've already been answered.
Fantastic, thank you. I am going to make this short and sweet. I have several comments and then one single question. I know that's uncharacteristic of me, but the comments are, meetings do not constitute an outcome. So you have mentioned meetings a number of times, but do not mention outcomes. The KOPs were disingenuous. They don't estimate a length to, from the point of vantage to the actual structures, and it is very clear that some of those are on roads. Also, not looking at local structures, although there was one that I think y'all made a mistake on that actually showed a local structure. The EMF slides that were presented yesterday were disingenuous. They showed a pattern of unsustained energy flow examples. Microwave was one of the examples. A blow dryer was another example, things like that. Those are not sustained, and what you're talking about is generating a sustained flow of energy with a sustained EMF. And so, but that's not my question. My question is for staff. And for you, Stephanie, exactly, is this package complete?
Commissioner, Chair, the application has not been deemed complete, as mentioned in the staff reports and the presentation. And with the proof of fire protection, the agreement forms that are outstanding in particular, the signed forms from the Big Sandy Fire Protection District and the Kiowa Fire Protection District, and that is a requirement that is for the SUR in particular and is consistently applied to all SUR applicants, as staff's understanding for a complete application. Those signed forms are regularly provided as part of a complete application.
So the simple answer is no, it's not complete?
Correct.
Okay, I also noticed the same thing that several folks have pointed out, that there's a number of unknowns in the commentary associated with areas where we usually expect to see a response. So, thank you for sharing that. That also points out to another level of uncompleteness. And so, those are my questions. Any additional questions that the planning commission has?
Actually, it's more of a comment. Based upon the subject expert that provided some feedback regarding property value and whether or not the property value diminishes, I just did a quick Google search and came up with a couple of studies, and one of them had some empirical data. And of course, they're mitigating circumstances. Is it crossing the property? Is it on the border of the property? Is it, you know, within, you know, near field of a structure? And this particular study... Come on.
Pardon me, Commissioner, can you put the microphone closer, please?
Yeah, you bet. Was talking about with empirical data from a number of areas across the United States, anywhere from a negative 15 to a negative 34% devaluation of the property. So, you know, this particular gentleman had a lot of scrambled eggs behind his name. Sorry to use a naval term, but, you know, ASA, IFAS, SR/WA, and so on, and worked for some sort of appraisal company. So I think, you know, in relative terms, there is information out there about what, you know, potentially can happen to a property with a transmission line on it.
Fantastic, thank you. Last question?
Yep, this is for staff. There's obviously a lot of moving parts to this whole project. We've got things with road and bridge, we've got traffic, we have this, we have that. What is, what is the county's plan to project manage that and make sure that everything that is supposed to happen and the communication is there between our different departments?
So those conversations are happening on a daily basis, almost at this point, as necessary. Obviously, it all depends on these hearings and the result at the BOCC as well.
Thank you. Have we appointed, will we have a project manager in the county that is going to coordinate all of this, assuming it goes forward? Has that been discussed?
I guess I'm not exactly sure what you mean by project manager. Mark had been handling this project in coordination with our outside consultants. I suppose I would probably be doing that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. With that, I will close the board-only discussion, and I believe that we have, do you have one more question there, Nicole?
Not a question, I was just going to make a statement before we moved to...
Please do.
Vote, okay. Mr. Chair and fellow planning commissioners, I just wanted to say that after a careful review of the report, the referral comments, and the application, that I recommend that we deny both the 1041 and the special use by review applications. As the staff said, the applications are incomplete, they lack required fire safety agreements, and they leave key agency concerns unanswered. That alone disqualifies it under our zoning regulations. The applicant has also failed to show that the benefits to Elbert County outweigh the impacts, yet the county is asked to absorb the full safety, visual, and infrastructure costs. We have a duty to follow the law and to protect our residents. Approving a major utility corridor through Elbert County without adequate fire planning or infrastructure would be irresponsible and potentially dangerous. Approving this would compromise the integrity of our land use process, so I urge the commission to uphold our standards and recommend denial of the 1041 and the SUR applications. And I would also like to add that I strongly encourage the BOCC, to the extent legally possible, to exercise the discretion our zoning regulations give them in Article 17 M2A, to defer making a final decision on the application until outstanding property rights, permits, and approvals are obtained, including all rights of way and easements. Thank you for letting me make that statement.
You're welcome. Good statement. That brings us to the next phase of this, which is entertaining a motion. We have the staff recommendation for denial. We have a very well-put-together statement relating to another form of denial that incorporates the staff statement. We can also entertain a motion to approve and cast our individualized votes based on each one of those. But I'd like to do this one at a time, with the first one being the XL Colorado Power Pathway 1041-2024-9235. I would entertain a motion on behalf of that 1041.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
I move to recommend denial of the major 1041 permit application, number 1041-2024-9235, on the basis that the applicant has not demonstrated compliance with the applicable approval criteria as required under the Elbert County zoning regulations. Specifically, the application fails to meet the requirements set forth in Article 17, Section M1, subsection C, E, G, H, J, and K; Article 17, Section M2, subsections A, E, and F; and Article 17, Section M4, subsection A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So, roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote. Diana Edstrom?
Aye.
Dan McCallum?
Was that Dan?
Dan McCallum?
Aye.
Kyle Donardo?
Aye.
Nicole Hunt?
Aye.
John Gresham?
Aye.
DeeDee Shotgrace?
Aye.
Van Sands?
Aye.
Robert Politic?
Aye.
Kevin Kirkwood?
Aye.
Commissioner, you have nine ayes.
Thank you. That motion is recommendation for denial. Now let's entertain a motion for BXL Energy Colorado Powers Pathway, SUR 2024-9236.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
I move to recommend denial of the SUR permit application, number SUR-2024-9236, on the basis that the applicant has not demonstrated compliance with the applicable approval criteria as required under the Elbert County zoning regulations. Specifically, the application fails to meet the requirements set forth in Article 3, Section E5, subsections A, B, C, D, F, G, and H.
Second?
I'll second it.
Official second?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Diana Edstrom?
Aye.
Dan McCallum?
Aye.
Kyle Donardo?
Aye.
Nicole Hunt?
Aye.
John Gresham?
Aye.
DeeDee Shotgrace?
Aye.
Van Sands?
Aye.
Robert Politic?
Aye.
Kevin Kirkwood?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Thank you. This motion also succeeds for denial for this SUR. With that, I'll entertain a motion to retire. Or adjourn for the night. Or adjourn for the night.
I move that we adjourn for the night.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to kick you off the PC if you oppose.